A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens' form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. No citizens are signed up to speak. We will begin with item A, Compensation Study Update. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is a report item on the fiscal year 2025 Compensation Study. While no action is requested at this time, the report does include proposed recommendations for the alignment of pay and pay practices to current market. With your permission, Madam Chair, I will ask Dr. Izzy Anderson, Vice Chancellor of Talent Engagement, to present the report. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Chair, Trustees, Chancellor. We are pleased to bring you the results and recommendations from the Compensation Study. We do understand we're running a little bit behind time, so we're going to give you the version that is as summarized as possible while being thorough. We understand you have the materials and have had an opportunity to review them. But before I turn it over to Gallagher, I would ask your permission to please acknowledge a couple of individuals who were key collaborators, if I may. Thank you. I would like at this time for members of the Talent Engagement Compensation Team to please stand. They were very diligent in ensuring that Gallagher received data that they needed to make their assessments. And I would be remiss to not mention all of the Chancellor's Council members who participated in the 21 interviews that we held with them to provide them an opportunity for input and feedback. Of course, including our precedence of the Staff Senate and the Faculty Senate. They were critical and just wonderful collaborators in helping us understand what their pain points are as it relates to compensation. And I would also be remiss not to acknowledge a lot, if not all, of the individuals that you see in the room who participated in the many interviews we had, because we did ensure that we enabled everyone, regardless of your title or position, an opportunity to hear directly from the compensation consultants. And they received an opportunity to provide information about their particular issues and experiences with compensation. Having said that, I will yield the floor over to Gallagher and our consultants and permit them to go ahead and introduce themselves.
And before you leave the podium, I just want to say thank you for including everyone. And I think we should applaud you.
Oh, thank you. We take our leadership from our Chancellor and from you all, so thank you. Come on up, Eric.
Thank you all for having us today. My name is Eric Smatana. I serve as Managing Director of Gallagher's Public Sector and Higher Education Compensation Practice. And I have with me one of the consultants from our project, Erin Collechi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Here's what we'll cover. We'll try to move as expeditiously as possible, recognizing the overall agenda that we have today. For background, for both the board as well as members of the audience, Gallagher's Public Sector Higher Education Practice, we have been in operations for nearly 40 years. We work with institutions like Houston Community College nationwide from coast to coast. Our particular practice is built around practitioners who have moved into the consulting space. So we've been on both sides of the desk relative to these kinds of projects. We're located nationwide with our consulting team spread across the country. We work with many, many higher education institutions in North America, both in the U.S. as well as Canada. And we do a fair amount of work here in the state of Texas. There are some other items there listed at the bottom of the screen that we focus on in terms of other kinds of work that we do with institutions like HCC. So the overall project engagement. We were brought on board to conduct a compensation study, looking at faculty, staff, and executive pay structures, as well as any other sort of associated components to that. We went through that study, collected market data, had listening sessions, worked through that, and developed new structures and processes that go along with that. And we'll dive into those pieces a little bit here in the upcoming slides. From a big-picture perspective, what we looked at there was we looked at your structures relative to the market median and the average salary per person. So what that means is that the overall study, we looked at not just the title level, but the individuals who are occupying those titles. And so that's how we delivered that benchmark data overall. So it was a very thorough examination of where pay is relative to the market. Part of that is we looked at your adjunct pay and made recommendations about where that should be overall, making a recommendation of $1,000 per credit hour. We also looked at updating and upgrading various structures within the broader structure so that it would maintain a market-aware position. And so when we talk about compensation structures, we tend to talk about it being market-aware, market-leading, or market-lagging. Market-aware is an ideal place to understand where is the market, where are we at relative to the market, and being able to effectively compete for the talent on the faculty and staff space. We also recommend combining some of the structures overall to consolidate that as we look at those staff positions or those non-faculty positions. Then we also looked at stipend pay and understand how do you stack up from a stipend pay perspective versus the education market and those various disciplines that are impacted by that. As Izzy said, we worked through a rigorous communication process. And I would again want to commend the HCC team on that. When we work with clients across the country, one of the things that we very often emphasize is all of the data in a project of this can be outstanding. And it can be really good information, but if there's the failure to have that communication, that transparency piece, and be able to let the voices into the process, that work is not going to accomplish what you're looking for to accomplish. And so we outlined there what we saw and what we heard from a thematic perspective in terms of what's working well currently, what could work better going forward. And as indicated before, that included stakeholder interviews, that included road shows, luncheon learns, one-on-one interviews, and a variety of other conversations to bring in the information we see on this slide in terms of what's working well and where are there opportunities there. One of the things to call out specifically to this slide is that these are perceptions of what we've heard from the audiences that we've met with. Whether or not these are in line or not with the particular practice or policy, that's neither here nor there. But this is the perception of the members of the HCC community that we met with from a thematic perspective. As we move into talking about the market overall, when we tend to talk about market as a consulting firm, we break it down into these four grids in terms of how do your positions and your roles stack up to the market? And so green being highly competitive, you're within that sort of 5% of the market median. So when we talk about the market median, that's the 100%. Competitive, within 10% of that higher low. Potentially misaligned, within 15%. Anything that's above or below 15% from that market point, we would oftentimes want to take a second look at that to say that looks like it may be significantly misaligned relative to the market. And so with that, we collected data from those sources that you see in your packets. CUPA HR, the College University Professional Association for HR, the Texas Community College Teaching Association, as well as the Texas Urban Community College Association, and various other data points, including private sector data, et cetera. So we have a comprehensive picture of what does the market look like when we look at this. We're not looking at a single dataset. We're looking at a comprehensive and robust dataset to understand where does HCC stack up against the broader market. This is a little hard to see on your screen, so forgive me there with the smallness of the font. But we're looking at the faculty market study results here. And I want to call your attention to the green bar in the middle as we look at that across the different levels of that. And so this is broken into sort of two charts there with the associates are F2 level, the bachelor's F3, master's F6, and the doctoral F12. That green row there in the middle is the midpoint of those structures. So the mid-step within those step structures. And you can see there that the mid-steps, the middle of that pay structure, is aligned with the market and it's market-competitive. What we see is that the ends of those markets, so we talk about the spread of ranges, et cetera. That's where opportunities exist at the bottom and the top of those particular ranges to be better aligned with what we're seeing in the market. But as individuals progress through that step structure, it is aligned with that market through the majority of it. As we look at adjunct faculty, and we already spoke about this a little bit in terms of the recommendation to move to $1,000 per credit hour. We can see that the CUPA data and the TUCA 8 data are fairly close in terms of what they're indicating as the market rate. We can see where you were at at 782, and that being roughly 80% of the overall market. And the recommendation would stand there to move that to $1,000 per credit hour in line with the market overall. As we move to continue on to talk about faculty more broadly and going back to those groupings of the F2, the F3, the F6, and the F12 groupings, and that distribution from what we see there, the market comparison versus the range midpoints. When we look at that broader range and we're looking at that step 17 again, that green row we saw a couple of slides back, we can see overall that at that midpoint of those step structures, regardless of what level we're talking about, it is closely aligned to the market with that bachelor position being the most closely aligned, almost spot on to it. For non-faculty, this is a space where we have to be sort of cognizant of the fact that you're competing for great talent, not just with other higher education institutions, but also the broader labor market holistically, both in the Houston area and depending on the role slightly more broadly. And so as we look at that, we see the support clerical structure, we see the telecommunications structure, law enforcement, the professional, technical, and the executive. And we can see that there are some opportunities that exist to be more closely aligned with the market. One of the things that would encourage the institution to think about is they think about the non-faculty roles. These are oftentimes roles, especially those that are situated outside of the higher education space, that that market may be moving at a different pace than what we see within the higher education market. And that's true of law enforcement, technically skilled roles, those administrative-type roles, so finance, IT, et cetera, as we think about that. But again, we see relatively aligned with the market with some opportunities in certain spaces with that. And it needs to be looked at from a continued maintenance and sustainability perspective on a going forward. So with whatever implementation the college decides to move forward with, recognizing this is essentially a living structure that can be maintained over time to continue to compete with the market overall. So to recommendations. First, we talk about salary structures. And so relative to faculty, looking to allow sort of a consideration or an allowance for that experience up to the maximum of that salary placement for new hires. And so thinking about what that allowance looks and feels like, adjusting those structures overall by 5.5% to remain competitive to the market. So again, that market-aware position that we spoke about. When we look at the staff positions or the non-faculty positions, looking at support clerical, professional, technical, and telecommunications, a big part of what we recommend there is combining that into a single structure versus the distinct structures that exist today. This is aligned with best practice and what we see in the market and what we see in other higher education institutions and the non-higher education institutions, as well as moving to a salary or pay range structure rather than a grade and step structure. Because again, that's what we see from a prevalence in the marketplace and what is aligned with best practice there. For the executives, narrowing the range spreads. Right now, the range spreads are a little bit wider, and so we'd recommend tightening that up a little bit and then adjusting the structure upwards to make sure that we're capturing that current population. And we've already spoken about the adjunct population to ensure that moving towards that $1,000 per credit hour to be able to compete for that level of faculty talent. As we move beyond the structures to the implementation approach, we have a couple of different recommendations here. The first being that you continue to move forward with a general salary increase. But of course, that needs to come from an affordability, fiscal ability perspective, and recognizing that as part of any decision that you might make there. As we think about that GSI, part of what we would recommend is adjusting the executive pool, if you will, by roughly 4%. And then for faculty and staff, 7.5%. And again, as we go back and we talk about those structural pieces, we talked about the faculty adjustment moving 5.5 by the structural perspective there. So when we talk about moving the structure and then moving pay, I would recommend at all times that as you adjust your structure, you should look at the overall adjustment to actual pay so that it is greater than the structural adjustment. So you do not find yourself in a position where you're lagging the market on a going-forward basis. You can maintain that level of market awareness. In terms of range place adjustments, looking at terms of how employees are aligned based on years of experience in the role and sort of what does that look like from a range penetration perspective, ensuring that is part of the calculation going forward to say individuals have been in their current roles for X period of time, and that should be a consideration in terms of where they land in the range. As employees are moving through that range and pay increases are applied, making sure that all employees are at least 1% above the new minimum of their pay ranges. and through the work and that the plan with the talent engagement and HR team is to continue to have that level of communication dependent upon what the implementation decision, how to move forward to continue that level of transparency and communications through the end of that and not just through the work itself being done. So thank you. Any questions I might be able to answer?
Questions, trustees? Trustee Wilson?
The 16 hours in a semester into that 1,000, is that $63 an hour or is it 16 weeks? Is that what that relates to?
This...
The adjunct salary you said should be raised to 1,000 for one semester credit hour?
Per credit hour.
Yeah, and there's 16 weeks in a semester, so I'm trying to figure it back as an hourly rate.
Oh, as an hourly rate? Typically what we see for adjuncts is it's not structured necessarily as an hourly rate, it's structured on that per credit hour basis to say, I'm teaching a three-credit-hour class, therefore that's a $3,000 payment.
Right.
It's not typically associated with an hourly basis simply because when we think about faculty, the amount of time they put in is significant. And if you were to break it into an hourly basis, the math starts to get a little complicated.
That's why I'm asking, you know, you may not do it that way, but in my business, everything is by the hour.
Sure.
And so I would like to have an equivalent that I can relate to and it's 16 weeks in a semester, right?
Sure.
So 16 into 1,000 would be?
A house done.
How many?
It would be six, it would be one credit hour per course. So if it's a three semester credit hour course, then that would be, that would be the 3,000.
Okay.
And if they take the two courses precisely, then it would increase to 6,000, et cetera.
Right.
Okay. Well, let's just keep it simple for me. Let's just say it's one hour and how many weeks do they teach that? 16 weeks?
16 weeks typically, yes.
So if you divide 16 into 1,000, you get $63 an hour.
Right.
If you multiply it times three, you divide 48 hours into 3,000 and you still get $63 an hour. Or if you have two classes at six, it's 9,600. I understand all that, but it comes back to about $63 an hour. Is that right?
Trustee Wilson, thank you so much for that question. We certainly have a lot of faculty members in the audience. We would be happy to provide you the response in writing as a follow-up. I think what you're asking for is the calculation per hour?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We'll provide that.
Okay. Also, it's a five and a half percent. And where was the page that you had some of the shortfalls? And one of them was that their, pages aren't numbered, so...
This slide, sir?
Uh-huh. They're numbered. Which one?
No. The stakeholder engagement, and you've got what's working well and what's not working well. And number four says no incentive for high performance. To me, it seems like in this, any type of salary evaluation, we need to have some merit, not just how many years. And I don't know how you do that. You know, is it, is it, if an English teacher starts out with 20 students and he ends with 20 students and they all pass, should that person be paid more than an English teacher that starts out with 20 and he ends up with 10 passing? Is, you know, the, and, and, see, this, this is real complicated to me now because of the fact that the funding with the state has changed and it's just semester credit hour. Now it's on completions and transfers and graduation rates. So we're going to get our money on how that happens, so we need to have some kind of evaluation in my mind that's merit-based too with the faculty. And I'm, I don't know, you know, I don't know how to do it, but it didn't answer my questions, your presentations, your presentation gave me more questions, quite frankly.
Trustee Chee.
Could I build on that because my question is very much in the same vein? Given that y'all have discussed with many of our large urban peers around the state, they're all grappling with the same challenge of implementing HP8. Apologize for my voice, I lost it this morning, it's slowly coming back. I'm curious if y'all could, you know, maybe after this meeting, send us any insights you have about programs, you know, incentive pay programs that our large urban peer set are implementing if they're considering them. That addressed exactly the issue that trustee Wilson just addressed. I think it'd be interesting for us to see what the landscape is around the state as we consider maybe something similar.
Absolutely. We're happy to provide that information. And what we can say from a trend perspective in higher education is that we're seeing overall more of a focus on pay for performance and merit pay is a consideration for different pockets of campus populations. And then we can certainly share some details around sort of what we see from a best practice and trend perspective there relative to that. And in terms of actual incentives or variable pay, so sort of separating sort of pay for performance or merit pay from the actual incentive pay, we're starting to see a little bit of an uptick in that nationwide. That tends to be more focused around private institutions at the moment and less so on the public institution side with that overall, but we are starting to see a little bit of traction in the public space.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think it's really appropriate, and I thank the members of the team for their presentation, but I think it is appropriate for, as was indicated earlier, to bring back some modeling to the Board of Trustees for consideration, and we'll be more than happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Certainly.
We will move to item B, Report on FY 2025 Budget Development Board Budget Workshop Number Six: Overview of Impact Initiative. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item introduces Budget Workshop Number Six. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Jacob Atkin, interim Vice Chancellor for Finance, to come to the podium to present the item. Okay, Jacob?
Thank you, Chancellor. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm happy to be with you again today. In this presentation, we would like to address some of the questions and recommendations that were made in the last board meeting, including a revenue analysis of the last 10 years, so that you can consider our financial ability now and potential changes to our financial position in the future as you consider these large initiatives that have been recommended. So as a reminder, on June 5th, or our next meeting, we intend to bring the final budget to this board for approval. And so this is essentially your last time to make any recommended changes and to provide feedback to us in preparation for the June 5th meeting. So let's start with a 10-year look back. We are in a unique situation right now. If you look at the last 10 years, we went from having close to our all-time high in enrollments to where we are now. We had a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic that totally changed the face of higher education, not only here in Houston but across the country. And so as we go through these slides, what I'd like to keep in mind is that we're looking at what could potentially happen in the future so that as a board and as an institution, we're planning with a conservative mindset in place so that we don't make decisions that could cause us serious problems in the future because we weren't taking into account some of the things that have happened in the past 10 years and could happen again. So let's start with state appropriations percentage, as a percentage of total revenue. You can see here, the green line represents the total amount of state appropriations that we've received each year. And the red line shows that as a percentage of the total revenue for the entire institution. From 2021 to 2022, we saw a significant decline that was primarily due to the significant drop in enrollment that we suffered as the pandemic hit. A similar drop could conceivably happen to the institution again if we had another major world event that affects things on a global scale. As we look at tuition and fee revenue, you can see that as our enrollments have declined, the amount that we've collected has declined. In FY 2020, that was the result of a significant tuition increase that was passed the year prior. As we look at '23 and then of course at '24, we're starting to see our enrollment rates recover and consequently our tuition and fee revenue is going up. As we look at our ad valorem taxes, this is probably where we have the most consistency and the most resiliency as an institution because of the broad and diverse tax base here in the Houston area. The total amount of revenue that we can expect through ad valorem taxes is very consistent. You can see through '17 through '21, it remained very, very flat. And since then, we've actually had to reduce our rates in order to comply with the law because of the growing tax base. This is a huge advantage for us as an institution and provides tremendous stability as we look to what could happen to this institution in the future. As we look at our other local income, this is where we have the potential for the most fluctuation from one year to the next in terms of the total revenue that we collect. Prior to the pandemic, during the quantitative easing era of the United States, interest rates were artificially suppressed and we made very little money on our investments. As we've seen that era end and interest rates go up partly due to inflation, you can see that we are generating a tremendous amount of money. And this will continue for the foreseeable future as we look at the persistence of inflation across the country and the continuation of high interest rates with a cut not expected until later this calendar year. So as we try to summarize this, state appropriations has experienced some fluctuation. Ad valorem taxes has been very consistent. Enrollment drives tuition and fees and our other local income is tremendously dependent upon the economic forces that impact the economy in the United States. So with that in mind, let's move to the large initiatives that were proposed last meeting. If we could, I'd like to start with the proposal to waive in-district tuition. Now, there are many advantages of approaching an initiative like this. First and foremost, this is going to be a huge benefit to the students within our taxing district, which of course aligns very well with the ad valorem taxes that we collect from the property owners within district. It also encourages, will, would encourage significant enrollment growth within district and our colleges with the lowest enrollments would benefit the most being located primarily within district. There are a few cons, however, that would come with a proposal such as this. First of all, this would only benefit in-district students, so approximately 34,000 SEH students each year and 3,700 CEU students. Second, as we waive tuition, we use that, the tuition that we collect to cover the additional costs associated with growth. So as we add more classes to accommodate the additional growth, being encouraged by waiving tuition, it's a year or two later before we collect enough revenue to backfill the cost of the additional faculty we need to hire, right? So it creates a timing issue between collecting revenue and the expenses that we have to cover. Additionally, with a waiver, we are no longer allowed to charge federal aid for those courses, right? If we waive it, there's no fee, so there's nothing to charge to federal aid. And then finally, we don't have any data that shows that there is a strong tie between reducing the cost of tuition and persistence within the program. And so while this may increase enrollment, there's no guarantee that this would increase persistence or completion on the part of our students. And once we completely eliminate tuition, that makes it politically difficult for us to unwind that and to start charging tuition in the future. An alternative solution to this idea would be to potentially expand the Eagle Promise Scholarship, essentially the Last Dollar Scholarship. So we would still collect tuition fees paid by financial aid and then make up the difference with the use of scholarship dollars. Now, that program has been very successful. We service about 1,200 students a year at the cost of $500,000 a year to the institution. With significant investment in that program, we could grow that and while not all of the students would qualify because not all of our students have satisfactory academic performance, for our performers, it would continue to provide them with free education. And this is about 31% less expensive than waiving the tuition altogether. So relating back to our options A, B, C, and D that we presented to you last year, you'll notice that waiving in-district tuition down at the bottom comes with a $21 million price tag. And so that's $21 million in reduced tuition revenue that we would collect that would have to be accounted for in a reduction of the expenses that you would plan to budget for next fiscal year. The second initiative that we would like you to consider is potentially reducing the out-of-district tuition difference so that, you know, instead of costing almost twice as much for out-of-district students, we could reduce that proportionately to help incentivize out-of-district students to select HCC over one of our competitors. The pros associated with this, first, you know, we're targeting potentially our most susceptible students to, you know, those students that are, that might be the most inclined to select a different college for their education. And secondly, this would be easy to unwind because we would implement it incrementally. We could increase it incrementally in the future if we ever needed to find new ways to generate revenue. In terms of cons, it only targets one student group, so around 24,000 student credit hour students. And there's still the impact that those students and their families don't pay ad valorem taxes and so we would be extending an additional benefit to them that maybe isn't being extended to our in-district students and to their families. The other disadvantage of this, trustee Wilson indicated that maybe it's time to go to some of these districts and invite them to join our taxing district. As we continue to close the gap between in-district and out-of-district students, we remove any incentive that these communities might have for joining our district. In terms of total cost, if we were to reduce the cost for out-of-district tuition by $15 per credit hour, that results in a $4.8 million reduction in total revenue for the institution. So as we look at the difference, we could do it in increments of $15 to per credit hour, resulting in $5 million in reduction in total revenue. Finally, I would like to talk about the potential of implementing an equitable access program for course materials. So trustee Cheben indicated that we should look at this or consider the possibility of trying to make course materials more affordable for our students. There are a number of models that we could adopt, but in general, if we're looking at this in terms of simply trying to provide course materials to our students for free without increasing their tuition or fees, there are a number of advantages. First, tuition and fees would still be charged to the student and would still be subject to reimbursement through federal financial aid. Second, any changes that might be made to these particular programs, and there's discussion by the Department of Ed, and we expect a ruling in July about any potential changes, wouldn't apply because we're providing this free to our students as opposed to a paid service. Third, according to national empirical data, institutions that implement equitable access see an increase in completions on the individual courses of between 15 and 20% based on the demographics of the students that are participating. And so unlike with the other two programs, there is data to show that we would expect to see an improvement in the completion rate of our students if we were to implement a program such as this. The other advantage is that this benefits all of our students, not just those students that are either in or out of district, and it streamlines criteria and eligibility for the way that we manage the FAST program. One of the biggest challenges we have in managing FAST right now is how to ensure that all of our students receive their course materials for free. There's not a good streamlined automated process for us to do that currently. If we were to implement a program like this, that reduces a tremendous barrier that is very time-consuming for us to manage with regard to our FAST payments. And then of course, this is easy to unwind, and I'll give you a short example. Alamo... Alamo College during the pandemic used HERF funds to implement this the first year totally free to students. But as the HERF money ran out and their budgetary surplus did not allow for them to continue to fully supplement this for their students, they were able to increase the fee by $10 per credit hour, where their actual cost is $20 per credit hour. And so we could follow suit and potentially adjust the amount that we charge our students. Ultimately, this is going to save our students in total costs for their education, and it's going to leave them better prepared on the first day of class to come and to be successful in their academic studies. And it gives us a tremendous flexibility as an institution to manage that long term. And as our finances fluctuate, we could, of course, pass that on to the students if necessary. Some of the cons, the time to implement this is challenging. The very soonest that we could roll this out would be fall of 2025. So even if the board were to consider a program like this, it wouldn't be an item for this year's budget, it would be an item for next year's budget. And this is expensive. If we calculate $20 per credit hour and we look at our student credit hours and our continuing education unit credit hours, the total cost could be as high as $32 million. So this is a big hit for us. And obviously, you can see this is why Alamo College is elected with a partially subsidized model instead of a fully subsidized model. So as these decisions relate to the budget, on the left, you can see that waiving in district has a $21 million cost. Reducing out-of-district on $15 per credit hour has a $5 million cost. An equitable access can cost up to $32 million. So using option A, like we have been doing for the past several presentations, you can see that right now, down at the bottom, we are calculating an $8 million surplus, right? So we fund the salary increases as was just presented. We fund all of the new initiatives, including $5 million per year to IT infrastructure, $5 million a year to safety and security, and increasing deferred maintenance to $15 million a year leaves us with an $8 million cushion. So depending on whether or not you elect to implement any of these new initiatives, it would impact not just the $8 million, but require us to look at potential ways to make other cuts in order to fit that into the budget. And that's assuming that we don't make any changes to generating the new revenue that we projected at $466 million. With that said, I would take any questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you know, this is our budget workshop presentation for your consideration, recognizing that you are the approval authority for the institutional budget and that we are committed to adhering to your recommendations, to incorporate your recommendations, and adhere to your timeline for approval. And I wanted to make that statement before discussion or questions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Wilson.
That was a great presentation. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the options, and I appreciate trustee Chiben's input too. That, you know, anytime you bring out one idea and start with it, the next one's always better and has thought through it a lot more. And like I said last meeting, the devil's in the details, and getting it all worked out is going to take a lot of work. But I, there's a positive attitude about that, and I liked what I hear and I liked the excitement in the room. And I think that this is something as a board, we need, we've got a lot of talent on this board, and I'm sure there's a lot of good ideas that can come from the board that can add to this and improve. And I'm looking forward to carrying this further. One of the big things I'd like to mention too is the fact that if we do reduce this through some form, I think there'd be a big bump in enrollment, a big bump in enrollment, and a big benefit to the whole community. The more people we get in school, the more people we get off the streets, get them educated, get them a job, I think crime will go down. There's all kinds of indirect benefits from educating the populace in the community. I was in Los Angeles all last week, and in the paper, there was a big article about how the Los Angeles something, School District, they were projecting a decline in enrollment. And they talked about Chicago's declining. They talked about, I'm sorry, the K through 12 enrollment was declining, which is going to come to us as a community college. New York City, the same thing. In Houston, we're seeing it. We're seeing the cuts in HISD right now and the turmoil there. So we have to be proactive as a board and as an institution to meet those challenges because there are going to be some great challenges that come in the near future, and we need to be ready for it, and we need to have a good, good plan. And I look forward to talking about this more. And one of the things I'm going to add is the fact that, you know, even the percentage of state appropriation is down, but it's from like 69 million to 68, so it's pretty flat. The tuition is down, obviously, which needs to come up. And but our ad valorem tax has gone from 110 million to 210. So the property tax is carrying the load around here. And that's why, to me, one of the most important thing, that's where our revenue comes from. And oh, by the way, today was, is May 15th, your property protest deadline. I spent all morning filling out my little blue and green forms, so I'm very aware of property taxes, and that's a, that's a big issue. But we've had those other small declines, but our, one of the big things is our other operating revenue has gone from half a million to 25 million in 10 years. And, you know, that fills that gap with the, with the state real easy. And I would like to do something to compete with Lone Star and San Jacinto College. But the problem with lowering the out-of-district is we're not being fair, in my mind, to the property tax people that support this institution. So we need to balance all of this. But if we get more out-of-district students, like in Katy, that has been a big revenue bump because those folks out there are paying out-of-district fees. And there's a lot of things, I don't mean to ramble on and that, but the other thing about expenses, you know, if we implement something like this, we're going to have to tighten our belt, and we, we need to eliminate waste, and we need to be more productive, and we need to run a tighter ship. And those are just some of my off-the-cuff comments, and I appreciate what you've done. And I look forward, I look forward to changing basically HCC and making this a dynamic, bold institution where people want to come here. They're beating us, beating the doors down to get in, and that's, that's what my objective was in bringing this up, and I, I hope we can get the board all on, on the same page on this, and we can come up with a lot better plan than my first initial plan. Thank you.
You know, trustee Wilson, your initial plan initiated recommendations for options, and I sincerely appreciate that. And I agree with you. I think the board could come together and work on an option that's going to be beneficial to the community. And even with providing the supplies, the books, that's, that would make a huge impact as well. And I also think, like you were saying, it would, you know, cut back on crime if we do something to help the community with tuition or books and supplies. I also feel that it would help with retention because there are times students won't go to school because if they can't pay the tuition, they can't purchase books, you know? So I appreciate you starting this conversation. Any other, trustee Chiben?
Also want to pile on by how much I enjoyed both reading this ahead of time and listening to your, your voiceover just now. Wanted to pile on to a comment that our board chair just made about the criticality of translating the enrollment bump that any of these schemes would provide into retention and completion of credentials of value, which ultimately is how we're going to be metricated by the state. When we get back together as a board to discuss path forward with a unified proposal, I think it'll be critical for us to have some additional data points. A, very, very pleased that you were able to voice over the last dollar approach versus the first dollar approach and the spread on the cost there. But then also, what kind of incremental faculty can we estimate it will be required based on other college systems that have implemented free tuition schemes? How much has their enrollment improved or increased as a result in the near term? What kind of enrollment, faculty hiring bump with that entail? How do we provide additional retention supports, be it career, you know, career advising? Last, last time we got together, we got a great presentation on gateway math success versus gateway reading success, is how do we, how do we replicate the success in gateway English and reading on the math side, what kind of additional costs and supports are involved there? Do we need to expand programs that are high demand so that folks don't enroll but end up on a waitlist and end up backing out because they can't get into the program that they're interested in? I think it's a bevy of requirements that we have to look at. And even if we go with the last dollar approach and we end up spending 14 and a half million or thereabouts, I think we'll have incremental costs to make sure that those students that are attracted and go online and apply end up sticking it out and earn a credential of value with us. So not to put more and more work on your plate like I tend to do from, from meeting to meeting, but I think that would really help us have a really meaningful discussion when we get back together and forge a unified path. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, one other thing I forgot to talk about or mention was, the last three years, we've had incredibly big surpluses in the budget, and this year, we've projected a big surplus. And if you average the four years of surplus, that's $34 million. You know, we can cover a lot of student costs with that per year. And in my mind, if we don't use it for the student cost, I want to give it back to the taxpayers because it's their money. So we need to do something with that money that'll benefit the taxpayers.
Thank you. I think, going on, on what trustee Wilson is saying, we have to keep in mind that that surplus is a result of a lack of action for deferred maintenance. So we have to look at that as well. So I understand surplus when you don't spend the money you need to spend to do the job you need to do. So we have a surplus for that reason. We did not execute our deferred maintenance. So we will have to look at that. But this is a great, this is a great presentation. It's an exceptional number of options that we can look at as a board, and we can come back with questions so that we can fine tune this and move forward. I still like the idea of helping our students with tuition because I think that it's a great idea. And thank you for giving us options that we can discuss and come back to you and ask questions and finalize something for our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The special meeting is now adjourned at?
Madam Chair, we need a few minutes to upload a presentation for the, for the four o'clock meeting. Two minutes.[1442.53]
Good afternoon. This regular meeting will now come to order on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at?
Four thirty-two P M.
For the purpose as listed on the duly. We'd like to remember, in our thoughts and prayers, the family. Pastor Emeritus at Wheeler Avenue Baptist Church, who passed away on Tuesday, May fourteenth. Reverend Lawson was the founder of Wheeler Avenue and is remembered as a profound civil rights leader who will be solely missed in this community. Reverend Lawson's body will lie in state from nine A M. Five P M. on Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The community service of celebration will be held. Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty. And the congressional service of celebration will be held at eleven A M. on Friday. Both services will be held at Wheeler Avenue Baptist Church, thirty-eight twenty-six Wheeler Avenue. Seven seven zero. At this time, please join Trustee Dave Wilson for the prayer following thy pledge.
Could I ask you all to please stand? Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for giving us another day. Bless the members of this board as we set upon the work of these hours of these days. Help us to make wise decisions in a good manner and to carry our responsibilities steadily with high hopes for a better future for our great college and our community. As the budget continues to be debated over the coming months, may all the members of this board be mindful that students and employees of our college are counting on us to approve a budget that guarantees opportunity for all to achieve great success rather than a budget that allows some to great success while others continue to struggle. May this budget not pick winners and losers but provide benefits that are balanced and shared by all. May your blessings, O God, be with us all these days and every day to come. And may all we do be done for the greater honor, your greater honor and glory. God bless William Lawson. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
We are now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, the Audit Committee, Board Governance Committee, and Committee of the Whole, external relations and marketing meetings on April third, twenty twenty-four, the regular meeting on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and special meeting, which was a board retreat, on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for April twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections, we are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes of April twenty twenty-four. Yes, for me, my computer is shut down.
Received. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
We will now move to our awards presentation and recognition. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards presentations and recognitions. Before you get started, Todd, I just want to say that we have hearing of the citizens here today, but we're going to move the hearing of the citizens up to the presentations because they are doing a presentation as well.
Do you want them now?
And. So.
Okay. We now invite BP America Representatives Mark Crawford, Senior Vice President of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Brett Clanton, Senior Governor Affairs Manager, to join trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for the check presentation in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in support of electric vehicle training program. That will provide training for the city of Houston's Fleet Department, Harris County's Fleet Department employees. Also invited for the presentation is Nick Haji Gorge, interim chief resilience and sustainability officer with the city of Houston, Lisa Lynn, Director of Sustainability, Harris County, Casey Brown, President of Evolve, and Jane Stricker, Head of Greater Houston Partnership, Houston Energy Transition Initiative. We also have the President of the Northeast College joining us as well. Dr. Mike Edwards. Thank you for your generous contribution to the HCC Foundation. We'll provide an opportunity for remarks at the end of the recognitions. Chancellor and trustees, if you would remain in front of the dais. At this time, we'd like to recognize our Phi Theta Kappa student leadership for their outstanding accomplishments and recognitions for twenty twenty-four. We ask the following to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais. Mohammed Hamza Faisal Hamid, President. Isabella Crumlin. Syima El Hodiri. Elijah Zane Guzman. Fong Nguyen. Nina Terrio. Michaela Waynes. And Isaac Wamleju. Please come forward. Also joining the recognition or advisors, Dr. Jessella Abels, Dr. Nicole Booty Heinlema, and Dr. Nicholas Rangel. The Phi Theta Kappa received the following awards. Texas Awards, Texas Distinguished Advisor Team, Dr. Jessel Abels, Dr. Nicole Booty Heinlema, Dr. Nicholas Rangel. Second finalist, Most Distinguished Chapter, Honors in Action Award of Merit, College Project Award of Merit. And then the Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society Awards, Distinguished Chapter Advisor, Dr. Nicholas Rangel. Chapter Awards, Distinguished Chapter twenty twenty-four, Distinguished College Project twenty twenty-four, and Distinguished Honors in Action Project twenty twenty-four. Lots of awards. Congratulations on an awesome accomplishment. Trustees and chancellor, we have one more recognition. At this time, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Madison Crisp, our Credentials of Value Highlight Video for the month of May. We invite Madison to join the chancellor and trustees for a photo opportunity as our C O V. highlight for May. The video highlighting her story will be presented during the chancellor's report under the Credential of Values Monthly Highlight. Congrats, Madison. Chancellor and trustees, you now may return to the dais. We now invite Ms. Karen Schmidt to the podium for remarks on the check presentation.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, Chair Dr. Linton Gary, Trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. I am honored to have the opportunity, as the President of the HCC Foundation, to recognize and thank BP America for its continuous financial support of Houston Community College. BP America has made an investment of $200,000 to the Northeast College's Electrical Vehicle Training Program. We are grateful to BP America for their community leadership, vision, and commitment. BP America, on behalf of the HCC Foundation and HCC, we appreciate your gift and thank you. Your philanthropic dedication is an inspiration to all of us, and we look forward to our continuing partnership in the years to come. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Michael Edwards, President of HCC Northeast College, who will share more about BP America.
If I would, folks. Would the Automotive Technology Training Staff please stand and be recognized? Would the City of Houston employees and fleet management officials that are here please stand? Would the Harris County Fleet Management Department and leadership please stand? There were one Harris County official here. Office of Resilience and Sustainability. All right. We'll allow them. And if they're into viewership, I'm still waving for you, still pleading for you. Thank you, Karen. I am deeply grateful for BP America's support of Houston Community College and honored to have the opportunity to thank them. Today, we recognize their investment in HCC that will continue to help advance our students' and community partnerships. BP America's commitment to America goes well beyond providing the energy and jobs that fuel economic prosperity. The company also supports a wide range of institutions and initiatives that strengthen the communities where its employees live and work. BP America also supports a Just Energy Transition that advances education for the current workforce. BP America seeks to work with partners to develop initiatives for the areas most impacted by the energy transition and enable the workforce to gain the skills needed for future energy systems. BP America understands that education is truly the epicenter if students are to access rewarding, in-demand, and sustainable careers. They also support initiatives that strengthen the communities where, again, its employees live and work. BP America, in coordination with HCC, the City of Houston Fleet Department, Harris County Fleet Department, has donated the $200,000 to fund an electric vehicle safety training course to approximately 270 City of Houston Fleet Department employees and an advanced-level electric vehicle safety training course to approximately 45 Harris County Fleet Department employees. And I am told, ladies and gentlemen, that 112 people have already been trained. So, on behalf of HCC Northeast College, we appreciate your contributions to support our EV training program. Your commitment is indeed an inspiration to us all, and we are grateful for your partnership. And on behalf of Northeast College Transportation Center of Excellence, we thank Mark Crawford and everyone at BP America for their generous philanthropic investment in HCC, Houston's workforce, and community that will continue to allow us to make a difference in automotive industry. I am pleased to introduce to you Mark Crawford with BP America, and I now invite him up to the podium for a few words. Mark?
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Crawford, and I'm honored to join you here today in my capacity as Senior Vice President of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at BP. Now, I'll go off script just a little bit to say, it has been a wonderful partnership. I work very closely with the chancellor's Business Advisory Board, and this is at least the second time I've been here for a check presentation, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful partnership. I just want to express our thanks to the Houston Community College Board of Trustees on extending the invitation to BP to be here today in recognition of this, again, great partnership between HCC and BP. This partnership and its focus exemplifies the many activities BP has undertaken after we set our new company strategy back in 2020. That strategy seeks to transition BP from an international oil company to an international energy company, and America is core, very core, to that strategy. In fact, BP has a larger presence in the United States than anywhere else in the world, and every major BP global business is active here. Across BP's many businesses, we focus not only on traditional hydrocarbons, but a wide range of renewable and clean energy initiatives. BP Pulse is our EV business and one of the areas where we envision substantial growth. And in fact, we plan to invest $1 billion in this area across the U.S. by 2030. Big number. We commend Houston Community College, one of our leading academic institutions, for its efforts to develop and offer EV training programs and to provide a just transition for current technicians in the industry. The partnership between BP and HCC seeks to educate our city and county fleet department employees around electric vehicle safety and maintenance, and this knowledge will provide technicians with special skills to aid in their ongoing professional development and build sustainable livelihoods. This partnership also highlights BP's ongoing commitment to Houston. This is home for BP in the United States. We have more employees here in Houston than any other city around the world. That's 4,000-plus employees. We embrace Houston's role as the energy capital of the world, and we continue to support the city and the county in their efforts to advance the energy transition. We are excited for the year ahead and many technicians who will depart HCC's campus with a certificate in hand and new knowledge to utilize. Thank you again to the HCC, to the City of Houston, to Harris County, and we look forward to the continued collaboration and partnership. Thank you so much.
Mr. Crawford, I just wanted to acknowledge, this might be the last time you stand before us in this capacity with BP. Just want to thank you for your service and your track record of leadership in this community and the legal community. People don't know you're a trained lawyer and all that. What you represent has meant in your industry and for so many, and we thank BP for its continued commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
He's retiring. Sorry, I should have said that. He's not getting fired. He's as young as he looks.
I wasn't going to say it, because I think when people look at me, they say, "You're too young to retire," but I'm well into my 50s at this point, so I am retiring at the end of June and going on, hopefully, to do bigger things in the community. So, thank you very much for those kind of words. Thank you.
Yes, trustee Wilson.
Mr. Crawford, you know, the one thing, this last week, I was in LA, and that was an eye-opener coming from Houston. There's more Teslas than pickup trucks in LA.
At this time, we'd like to pause for an overview in recognition of Cinco de Mayo, which was celebrated on Sunday, May 5th. We're pleased to welcome to the podium Dr. Natalie Garza for recognition of Cinco de Mayo.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. As was stated, I'm Dr. Natalie Garza. I'm a faculty member in the HCC History Department, and in addition to U.S. history courses, I also teach Mexican-American Studies within the humanities. I'm here today to talk about the significance of Cinco de Mayo. Cinco de Mayo is the celebration of Mexico's defeat of the French in the Battle of Puebla on May 5th, 1862. It is a U.S.-created holiday, first celebrated by Mexican-Americans living in California. The significant of the battle and hence the significance of the celebration itself is not really about military victory, rather it represents the celebration of the values of democracy, freedom, and constitutional rule that Americans, broadly speaking, have championed for hundreds of years. So, some history. In 1862, during the reign of Napoleon III, the French invaded Mexico under the guise of strained relations stemming from an unpaid debt. Just two years prior, the Mexican president Benito Juárez had emerged victorious in his own civil war of sorts, known as the War of Reform. This was a war against political conservatives who attempted to secede from Mexico. In defeating the conservatives, Juárez successfully maintained the Mexican Union and reaffirmed the legitimacy of his constitutionally-elected government. These are the very same battles that his counterpart to the North, Abraham Lincoln, would be fighting in the following years. The Mexican-Americans who first celebrated Cinco de Mayo lived in the United States. Some were native to California and some were newly arrived migrants. What is clear is that regardless of their native origins, these ethnic Mexicans saw parallels in the fates of Mexico and the United States. They were deeply invested in the outcomes of both nations. They believed that the values of freedom and democracy were being threatened in both cases, and in each case, they were on the side of and celebrated the victories of the constitutionally-elected governments, who in their view were the protectors of democracy. This is to say that the Mexican-Americans supported the Juárez government against the French and the U.S. government against the Confederacy. So, the U.S. Civil War broke out on April 12th, 1861, and was well underway when the French military marched onto Puebla on May 5th, 1862. Mexican forces had been mobilizing under the leadership of Ignacio Zaragoza to defend Puebla, and they successfully resisted the French aggression. For two days, the French made attempts to overtake Puebla, but eventually retreated. News of the victory reached Mexican-Americans living in the U.S. in late May. So, several factors contributed to this small battle becoming a nationwide celebration in a totally different country than the country where the battle took place. First, the French were seen as the dominant military, and for the Mexican forces to have emerged victorious was unexpected, and it became a source of pride for ethnic Mexicans everywhere. Also, the victory came at a time when news of Confederate defeat of U.S. forces was occurring quite frequently. For Mexican-Americans who supported the Union, the Mexican victory at Puebla was welcomed finally as a victory for their side. They reasoned that if Mexican forces could defend freedom against a powerful French force, then surely the U.S. could find victory against the Confederacy. Lastly, Ignacio Zaragoza, the hero of the Battle of Puebla, was Mexican-American. He was born in Goliad, Texas, so there was pride in one of them achieving this unexpected victory. Mexican-Americans believed the causes of both wars were intertwined. In their minds, Mexico had to defeat the French to assert independence against empire. Similarly, the U.S. had to assert itself against a tyrannical Confederacy that did not value freedom. There were concerns that the French and the Confederate states would support one another, leading to mutual victory. Not only would this signal the downfall of Mexican independence, but Mexican-Americans saw this potentially leading to the expansion of slavery and continued subjugation of ethnic Mexicans. So, it's within this context that the first Cinco de Mayo was celebrated in 1863, a year after the battle. The celebration took place in the midst of another battle going on in Puebla and the same year that the Emancipation Proclamation was issued. The first celebrations were subdued mostly because people weren't sure if Mexico was going to emerge victorious again, but they were marked by ceremonial guards, music, fireworks, speeches, and calls for patriotism, symbolized by the raising of both the Mexican flag and the United States flag. In the years following, these celebrations grew in scope and region as Mexican-American mutual aid societies throughout the U.S. began to organize and celebrate Cinco de Mayo. In 1865, Confederate forces surrendered to the United States government in the Civil War. By 1866, the French would begin to withdraw troops from Mexico and eventually surrender as well. Even in surrender, the history of Mexico and the United States were intertwined. Without the distraction of the Civil War, the U.S. government could conceivably turn its attention to the threats to freedom and democracy in Mexico and join forces against the French. So, that was a big motivation for the French to withdraw. In the aftermath of these victories, the celebration of Cinco de Mayo remained popular as a reassertion of liberty over enslavement, independence over empire, and democracy over tyranny. In modern times, the history behind the celebration of Cinco de Mayo gets lost in restaurant promotions for margaritas and guacamole, but within Mexican-American neighborhoods, you will see celebrations that emphasize culture. But lost within that, we see less of the speeches or emphasis on patriotism that were associated with the first celebrations of Cinco de Mayo. This is why education is so important and why this institution should continue to support Mexican-American Studies at Houston Community College. Cinco de Mayo, as it's celebrated today, is an inclusive celebration that invites people to appreciate Mexican-American food, music, and dancing. When we also educate people on the origins of the celebration, it creates a sense of unity as well, particularly in the face of hostile rhetoric towards Mexican-Americans and other Latinos that we're facing today. So, with that education of what Cinco de Mayo, how it originated, we create that sense of unity in the knowledge that what makes us American, that is, the shared values of freedom, democracy, and constitutional governments are embedded in the traditions of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Now, we invite to the podium Dean Annie Suie to present to us on Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is celebrated in the month of May.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Madam Chair, Trustees, faculty, staff, and students. Today, I will provide a Today, I will provide a brief overview of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. As a native Houstonian and a first-generation Chinese-American, I grew up during the time when there was not much public recognition for the Asian community. My grandparents and parents immigrated from China in the southern province of the Guangdong. The original Houston Chinatown was located across from the George O. Brown Convention Center. There was only two restaurants at that time, one or two Chinese products grocery stores, and there was a church. The name of the church was Chinese Baptist Church, which is still in existence today in the Spring Baptist vicinity. There are two factors resulting in the AAPI Proclamation. On May 7, 1843, the first Japanese immigrants, known as EC, arrived in Hawaii and began working in the sugarcane fields. On May 10, 1869, 15,000 to 20,000 Chinese immigrants laid tracks for the first transcontinental railroad in the United States. They worked for the Central Pacific Railroad under harsh and laborious working conditions. Even though many countries focus on East Asia, which consists of China, Mongolia, North Korea, South Korea, Japan, Hong Kong, Taiwan, and Macau, there is a division of five regions. There is a central, the east, south, southeast, and western. We must also include the US Pacific Islands, if you'll note where Hawaii is located on the map. To commemorate the accomplishments and significance of AAPI, President James Carter designated AAPH Week in 1978, and then President George H.W. Bush proclaimed AAPH Month in May of 1991 and 1992. There are also two other inclusive designations for AAPI Heritage Month. One is the Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American, and this is for the southern region of Asia. And then we also have the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, which is currently in use by President Biden. The theme for the AAPH 2024 is advancing leaders through innovation. Here, you will see important contributors to science and technology, which includes AJ Bach, Indian and American computer architect. His team created the Universal Series, the USB, and also, we're all familiar with the YouTube media platform, who is a partner, Stephen Sheehan is a partner in this business. We also have two commemorative United States Postal Service staffs, the Nisi, the second-generation Japanese-American soldier fighting for the US in World War II. As you notice, there's a label, "Go for Broke." And then also, Chen Shunwu, she is a Chinese nuclear physicist. She is also an advocate for women in STEM. Of the colleges and universities within Texas, HCC has the sixth-largest headcount of AAPI students. Within Texas, HCC is ranked second in awarding associate degrees and nationally ranked 11th in awarding associate degrees to AAPI students. Houston's largest Asian communities comprise of Indians, Chinese, Filipino, Pakistani, and Vietnamese. The Vietnamese population is the largest in Texas and the second-largest in the United States. The AAPI students' population resides in or around the vicinities of Sugar Land, Stafford, Missouri City, Fort Bend County, and the Katy area. If you are familiar with the Asian community and if you're familiar with the Beller Boulevard, right at Beltway 8, if you go back towards Highway 59, that is known as Chinatown. If you go towards Highway 6, that is known as Viettel. There is that distinction there. Also, near Arcady Campus, we have a large Asian town over there. In that vicinity, also is a very growing AAPI population. Around the Hobby Airport, there's also a large Vietnamese community over there. Other events for AAPI being recognized by the City of Houston, the Asian Chamber of Commerce, and also the Asian Society. So, now I would also like to acknowledge the Asian Culture Club, which was created or organized over a year ago. We work with the student life and also the Bridge Quinte Program, collaborating together as we host these events to explain or incorporate our culture. So, this past year, we had the Mid-Austen Festival in September, which is about the mooncakes. We also celebrate the Lunar New Year, to me, known as the Chinese New Year or the Spring Festival, and also the AAPH Celebration, which recently occurred in May. Again, we work with student life and the Bridge Quinte Program in collaboration with this. So, now I would like to acknowledge my Asian Culture Club, the advisors, the members, the students, the officers, and also all of my colleagues that came out to support me today. So, will you please rise? And in addition, I also for our club, we have a gift back for each of the Board of Trustee members and also for Chancellor Margaret Ford Fisher. And inside there, there's little snacks, something from the Asian culture from different areas, from different countries. So, I will have them ask and bring them up. So, here we have Amanda Andres Mohamed Vezel. I also have two of my advisors here, Tracy Crowe and Luke On. Oh, yes, Lucky Money, it's the Year of the Dragon.
Thank you so much.
And in conclusion, celebrating and understanding the diverse cultures and their perspectives is essential to the culmination of building a sense of belonging for our faculty, staff, and most importantly, students in recognition of Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month at ACC. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both for your presentations. At this time, Madam Chair, this concludes the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Thank you, Todd. We will now go to hearing of the citizens. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. Time allotted to each citizen or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee or comments about the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee, and may require the speaker to resume his or her comments in closed session, as permitted under the Personnel Exception to the Open Meetings Act. The following persons have signed up to appear before the board in closed session. I'm sorry, in open session. Dr. Cheryl Sterling. Gwendolyn. This is Dr. Cheryl Sterling, Gwendolyn Joseph, Weldon Elbert, and Dr. Charles Green, who was the first chancellor for Houston Community College, and I think we need to stand in the presence.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, trustees, Chancellor, faculty, staff, and students. I am just honored to be here this evening. I'm Dr. Cheryl Sterling, and it was my distinct pleasure to serve this great institution for over four decades. I'm just happy to be back this evening. First of all, I'd like to say, I see Dr. Ford Fisher has this look on her face. However, I'm here today representing on behalf of the Houston Community College retirees. We have about 25 or 30 members in our group. Today, we have Cheryl Johnson, who served about 43 years at Houston Community College. We have Alex Prince, who served 48 years. We also have Gwen Joseph, and as you just mentioned, we have Dr. Charles Green, who's our first chancellor here at the Houston Community College. I also would like to recognize -- I also would like to recognize -- oh, Dr. Ford Fisher, could you please stand? We'd like to present you with these roses as becoming the first African-American female of this great institution. So, we want -- she can come forward. We wanted to give you your roses while they were fresh, and you can smell them while you're here. We also would like to present you with this plant from our retirees as well, because as this plant grows, we hope that you will grow this institution to heights unknown. Okay, I have a couple of proclamations for you as well. We have the Honorable Monica Raleigh here, therefore, a council member on behalf of Robin J. Alakat of the City of Missouri City, here extends his sincere honor and congratulations to Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher for being selected for the newly-appointed chancellor of Houston Community College. We want to present this to you. This is from the Missouri City. We also have Stafford, that is forthcoming, and also State Representative Ron Reynolds will have one forthcoming as well. The next proclamation we have is from the -- given under the seal of the NAACP Missouri City, Texas Branch 6262, on this 15th, the day of May, honoring Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher. This will be archived in NAACP in Missouri City, this regards from NAACP. The next one we have is from State Representative Senator Miles. Resolve that Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher be honored on her appointment as chancellor of the Houston Community College system and that she be extended a sincere wishes for the continued success. Senator Boris Miles. Thank you. And the last one we have is be therefore resolved by the Harris County Commissioner precinct hereby recognizing and commends Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher on outstanding achievements, dedication, and education, and historic role as the American first African-American female chancellor of the Houston Community College System Precinct One, extends a heartfelt congratulations to her as well as deserved. Commissioner Rodney Ellis, thank you so much. We would like to just say we're here to honor you and appreciate you as well. Hopefully, thanks. Thank you.
Dr. Sterling, I know we're not supposed to -- I'm not speaking directly to you, pretend I'm not, but I just want to say thank you so much for calling and asking to do this because I think Dr. Ford Fisher is very deserving of that presentation, and she's working very hard to help this institution to make it the greatest, not just in the state but in the country. So, Dr. Ford Fisher, you deserve that presentation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have to speak because in 1989, I was elected to the first board, and Margaret Ford Fisher was here. And we changed this system from a president-led 44-facility institution to a chancellor-led five-college organization, and we hired Chuck Green. And so, I am just so excited. Every person at that podium was here when I got on this board, and I was the baby of the board, and that was literally what Chuck Green called me, the baby of the board. And now we have a junior of the board, so he understands how I feel. And I am just so thankful to see you all. It was amazing to see you all in one place, because I haven't seen you in such a long time. Is Chuck hiding behind the post? Oh, he is just -- I'm just so thankful that you all remembered what it was like when we started. And to honor Dr. Ford Fisher, it's amazing, and thank you so much for doing this. I'm just -- it's really nostalgic and I'm really overwhelmed, but I remember Dr. Ford Fisher. I remember. So, thank you all. Thank you, Cheryl Sterling, for doing this. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, members of the board, colleagues, I have to say that I am overjoyed as well. I'm deeply appreciative, and I thank you so very, very much. This is indeed a great honor for me to be recognized by my colleagues, former colleagues, and friends, and I thank you so much for this. Thank you. We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts, an overview from conferences or workshops attended, and or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their respective comments to no more than two minutes. It's really four, but two. Trustees? No comments? No, no comments?
I do.
For what, for my people?
We had a, there's a Spring Branch Business Committee meeting, and Dr. Riley put on a presentation about the Visual Arts Program, and she had mentioned that their attendance had bumped up considerably in enrollment from people that the chancellor and the staff had recruited from the Art Institute that abruptly closed down. And so, that was a gap that this school filled, and it was, it was great to hear that. You know, I saw it on the 10:30 news, and you have Dr. Riley said, "Well, that's why the chancellor called me at 8:00 AM Saturday morning." So, but anyway, it was the hard work of that group that made a difference, and I appreciate them. And my other company comment is to trustee Vandible Stallworth, if she's going to soon join that alumni society.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other trustees?
Madam Chair.
Trustee Laredo has.
Trustee Laredo.
I just, real quickly, again, I just want to thank the student organization and the honor society, because I had the opportunity to go and, and just be present at their installation for their honor of society. And that's when I found out that they had received all these awards internationally and nationally. So, that's why it was so important for us to bring them, because it's all about them, and, and it's also great to just be able to celebrate all their winnings and accomplishments. And I know that we have a lot of accomplishments that our HCC students are doing out there. So, again, I just want to say thank you and congratulations, and keep on working hard. Thank you.
That's a good comment.
I'd like to say thank you to the South Campus Team of Central College, led by Dr. Siddiqui, for their support of the community events in District Nine for the Urban STEM Robotics Competitions, for bridging the digital divide, recreational drone licensing, which was free, by the way. The, at one of the, of the competitions, they gave out 96 recreational drone licenses. And I really appreciate them for that, for the TED Talks that were hosted on campus, for AAR 5416 meetings that happen every month, where our seniors come in and they register for class and they go to school. And I'd like to say thank you to Southeast College and Dr. Franvia Graham Glover for her steadfast support of hosting Urban STEM Robotics Competitions. She has been faithful in that, and I want to say thank you. Thank you to the internal audit team. You all did an exceptional body of work for the Enterprise Risk Management System. That is a robust, extraordinary system, and there is not another one like it in the community colleges across the nation. And I want to say thank you for that, it was a lot of work. You guys did a great job. And to the finance and accounting team for their exceptional work and presentations to this board during this transitional period. We needed it, and we have it, and we thank you for answering us in a manner that we actually understood. Thank you so much.
Let's see. Well, I, oh, go ahead. No.
Both, thank you Cheryl and Gary. The, it's been, it was quite an interesting month, actually, the last couple of weeks. First, I want to start by thanking Chancellor Margaret Ford Fisher allowing me to be a sidekick at the ADN Pen and Ceremony at Coleman at the end of last month. I will tell you, if you have not participated in that ceremony, it's definitely one that's worth your time. When we watched our graduates or soon-to-be graduates stand up and take the Nightingale Pledge, committing themselves to a life of public service. So, that was extremely meaningful. That took place on Tuesday, April 30th. That same night, I had the pleasure of visiting your campus, Dr. Siddiqui. I was on Central at the Heinem Theater, and there got to see the ensemble concert performance that was put on by the Houston Academy for International Studies and the Symphony Orchestra at HCC. In case you didn't know, we had about a 16-piece orchestral band out there. It's just a phenomenal presentation. Mr. Iken, it got me thinking, there are some things that we can do to that theater to really make it the kind of community asset that it ought to be. And so, we'll, we'll have that as part of subsequent discussions down the line. I want to acknowledge Department Chair for Music, Dr. Colleen Riley, as well, I'm sorry, Dr. Colleen Riley is the dean of Music, Video, and Performing Arts, and then the Department Chair, Ms. Susan Hines, both who I got to spend some time with that evening. Later that week, is Ms. Suzette Brimmer still in the room? Okay, I saw her earlier, she's the dean of the Consumer Arts and Sciences. We had a fashion show at Central Campus on May 3rd, Chromatic, and it was sort of a reprisal of the fashion show that took place at the Museum of Fine Arts Houston this past December. It's just fascinating, the theme was the fashion of the Islamic world was the theme, and so, we got to really see some wonderful presentations by students. So, those are just some of the fascinating things that I got to participate in. And so, that concludes my report for District Four.
For sake of time, I want to talk about just two events that I attended, and that was the Text Chace Graduation Ceremony and the VAS Graduation Ceremony. Those are two of the most impactful graduation ceremonies that we have. I'm excited at all four, but those two have such an impact, because we're helping people get a second chance with Text Chace. And with VAS, we are giving people hope who felt in the beginning, their parents felt that there was no road through education for them. And it makes them feel so good when they walk across that stage and, and can stand in front of that camera and take a picture holding that paper, that diploma holder that says HCC. So, I just wanted to comment on those, because those were the most significant. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just always so grateful to attend them. Okay, if there are no other, yes. I just received here a resolution from State Representative Ron Reynolds. Would you please stand? State Representative Reynolds, would you like to come up and take a picture with Dr. Ford Fisher? I mean, every, we all have, so it's your turn now. I am too. Good response, good response.
Okay, I have one, one little thing I wanted to say. Congrats to the Northeast Campus, Dr. Edwards, for receiving the Jett Grant Presentation from the Texas Workforce Commission for their Commercial Trucking Driving Classes. So, great job on that.
We would like to take this opportunity to recognize our junior trustee, Sean Cheven, who's celebrating his, who celebrated his birthday on Wednesday, May 8th. We hope that you had a wonderful birthday celebration, and I'm saying happy birthday to you. Happy birth. That's it.
If I could take just one liberty, we celebrated a much more important birthday the week before, which my son's Gabriel, he turned two. So, he had a ton of fun, so.
Okay, board meeting scheduled. The following meetings are upcoming. June 5th Committee Meetings, time to be determined. June 5th Committee of the Whole Meetings at 2:00 PM. June 5th Special Meeting at 3:00 PM. And June 25th Regular Meeting at 4:00 PM. Please note that the regular meeting has been rescheduled to June 26th, as the college will be closed on June 19th in celebration of Juneteenth. The meeting will be held at the HCC Administration Building, 3100 Main Street, and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirements. This concludes the chair, the chairman's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the chancellor's reports.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to once again thank all of the elected officials, former colleagues, former chancellor of the Houston Community College, and friends who presented the recognition. I sincerely thank you for that. And of course, we are working in collaboration with the community for HCC to become stronger, to serve even more residents of our nine trustee districts. And so, my report will be brief. I would like to begin with our enrollment report. Currently, as you see on the screen, enrollment is open for spring, summer, and fall. As you can see, enrollment is currently up for all three terms over the 2023 academic year. I would like to thank the HCC faculty and staff, who are working hard to serve our communities and to ensure student success. Next, I, it must tell you that on Tuesday, May 7th, I had the great privilege and the opportunity to meet the family of our first president, Dr. Joseph Champagne, who served from 1971 to 73. He's written his memoirs. It was an illuminating and also quite an emotional conversation, as his family members were in tears, they were so delighted to be here. They reside in Michigan, they had gone to Austin and San Antonio and decided to drive here, because they wanted to see Dr. Champagne's photo on the display. And so, they talked about his early beginnings, and I will just be very brief as I mention this, because I think it's very significant. Dr. Champagne came here from Michigan to study whether or not the Houston community should have a community college. He was with the Mann Group. And so, he went to Austin, Texas, and he advocated on behalf of HCC to establish a community college. He was the first director, because they did not name him president initially. And then, he became president, working collaboratively with Dr. Boney and then Mr. Whitley. Then, next, I feel that it's really critically important as well, as we make reference to the first chancellor of the Houston Community College, Dr. Charles Green, his colonel. He brought to us innovations as well. And so, it really is a convergence of wonderful connections as a result of meeting with the former chancellors, and of course, the family of the president of the Houston Community College as well, and the founder. And so, as we look at that, we know that we can celebrate all of the great accomplishments as a result of using Riosolata, that was the largest online college for a number of years. And Dr. Green was the president of that college, who brought the innovation here. We began with the internet, with the World Wide Web, hiring personnel to teach computer training, focusing on distance education, et cetera. So, with each of the chancellors, each of the presidents, there have been tremendous innovations that have led to the growth of this great institution. Next, I would like to indicate that on May 8th, Dr. Norma Perez and I met with Dr. William Harris, president of Space Center Houston. I met Mr. Harris at the LICM meeting that was held here in Houston. At the meeting with him and his team, discussions were held about forming a STEM partnership with all HCC colleges. So, on June 28th, the team at Space Center Houston will host our leadership team. This visit will provide a valuable opportunity to showcase the impressive facilities and operations of this renowned organization, as well as to engage in meaningful discussions surrounding the potential for a mutual beneficial partnership. The tour of the Space Center Houston promises to be an enlightening and inspiring experience, allowing our leadership team to witness firsthand the groundbreaking work in cutting-edge technologies that are shaping the future of space exploration and discovery, and how we can draw on their resources to support our students. And they are very excited about partnering with all seven colleges, and there was particular interest immediately in partnering with the Fragga Campus, primarily because of the telescope and the observatory. So, they said, "What else do you have? We want to find out more." And so, we're looking forward to that visit. Next, I would like to briefly share with the board that the Carl Perkins Site Visit will occur, May 21st through the 22nd, to review three programs, automotive technology, criminal justice, and welding technology. Two coordinating board representatives, the Assistant Commissioner will be here along with a representative. They were here in February for the upcoming Perkins Visit Discussions, and of course, we feel very positive and confident that they will have a very, very good visit with all of the members of our team, because everyone is fully prepared to share the outcomes with them. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to participate in celebrating our students who have completed a degree or certificate program. This morning, of course, in addition to the other celebrations that were held, and you can see those on the screen, we met at Central College to celebrate dual-credit students. Their stories were quite compelling, and they were lauding the successes that they have now accomplished because of the largesse of our board and the support for them to complete an associate's degree at an early age, so that that will help launch their pathway to a baccalaureate degree and to meaningful employment that they will then have to come back and to serve our community. So, I think all of that is really very positive, and I would like for you to join me in thanking our Board of Trustees, who have made this opportunity possible for our students, starting back in 2005, to make available the dual-credit opportunities for them, for our students from all communities, and we can see the successes. So, please join me in thanking our Board of Trustees. Thank you so very much. Now, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Igor Lucic to come to the podium to give the Student, United Student Council Report. Mr. Lucic, president of the United Student Council.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, Chancellor Madam Ford Fisher, respected faculty and staff. My name is Igor Lucic, and I serve as the president of United Student Council here at HCC, and I'm always excited to meet all of you here today for the month of May, and to share what me and my fellow officers were able to accomplish as we close out our term. Today, I'll be speaking on the following terms. The TJCSG A State Conference and some closing remarks that I prepared. For my first order of business, I just want to discuss our trip that we were joined with the fellow officers from all six student governments from HCC and the Texas Junior College Student Government Association State Conference hosted in Austin from April 25th until April 28th. This is a great opportunity to connect and network with students from all across the state, but I bring it up for two main reasons. For some time, larger schools like HCC were under threat of a rule change that would limit the total voting power of all schools with more than five SGA's. My fellow HCC officers and I were able to work across the aisle with other schools to amend the state constitution and to change the voting rules once and for all to enshrine and protect the voices and votes for larger schools across the entire state of Texas. And the other reason I bring this up is to celebrate the achievements and recognitions we were able to obtain at the convention. Northwest, they were celebrated for being the most spirited school at the convention, but Southwest SGA certainly made but Southwest SGA certainly made a huge impact this year. They came in third entirely in the entire state of Texas for the Sweepstakes Award, Chapter of the Year, as well as Essay of the Year. They came in first for Poem of the Year, as well as Event of the Year. And on a personal note, the SGA President, Southwest President Avi, came in third place. Please stand. She was able to come in third place overall for Student of the Year for the entire state of Texas. And we're also. And I'm excited to announce that she will continue her education at Stanford University in California. I'm also happy to announce that Elijah Day and Happy from the Northwest campuses will be continuing their educations at University of Houston. But last but not least, our advisor, Ms. Wilson, was recognized as a Texas Legend of the Year for the year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And now for my final order of business as USC President, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to reflect and to pay respects to those that have helped me along the way. When I was elected a little more than a year ago, I felt a large rush of honor. Honor and the awesome duties as the role of president, as well as the history and the weight of those who came before me. Being president was not an easy role, and it required a multitude of skills in order for your administration to survive. But above all, it required two skills for your administration to thrive, purpose and a team. On top of everything, my team and I had one goal driving us, student engagement. It was no secret that COVID had torn the fabrics of engagement across the board, but it was our focus to pick up the broken pieces and build it back together again. But just like waters from a mighty flood can cause immense destruction and devastation, the same water with light from the sun and some time can breathe life into nature around us. I can proudly say that our time in office, as it comes to an end, the flowers are blooming once again. Student engagement is up across the board. Student civic participation is at an all-time high for SGA elections across the region, and our TJCSG A region has finally grown up to pre-COVID numbers. Even though I've spent countless hours working on these matters, I know that I could not have achieved anything without the hard work of my team. I would like to thank Estu, who unfortunately couldn't be here as her work as secretary, Avi for her work as historian, Emily for her work as parliamentarian, Erica for her work as treasurer, and last but not least, Anna for her tireless work on bridging the online community with the USC. And last but not least, again, Ms. Wilson for being such a strong, resilient advisor for all of us. Although the flowers around H. C. C. Are blooming once again, I must say that our work is not done yet. As we look toward the future for the next administration, their future may be bright, but they will certainly be rocked with challenges that they will need to deal with. Due to this, I just wanted to offer some wisdom to any future leaders that may be listening. A great piece of advice that has guided me, that I've always looked, is that you must always look ahead and plan for anything that may happen. A long time ago, Seneca, a Stoic philosopher of ancient Rome, once wrote that the only inexcusable thing for a leader to say was, I did not think that could happen. You must always be prepared, and you can never let your guard down. You will never know what is around the corner, but you must always have a plan in place and know how to act on whatever may appear. And finally, a reminder, although the future lies beyond our vision, it is never beyond our control. We bring apart a future that is set forth through our own thought and action. We all play a part in the direction that we are guided towards. Some believe that there is nothing that one man or one woman can do against the enormous weight of the world's ills, but many movements of thought and action have flowed through the work of a single man. A young lawyer from India led a peaceful revolution in order to drive back the reaches of imperialism and to establish a state of self-governance. A thirty-three-year-old Thomas Jefferson proclaimed that all men are created equal, but a thirty-four-year-old M. L. K. Junior was able to lead a march through the streets of Birmingham to ensure that all men are treated equally. A thirteen-year-old Mala Yozovat were able to fight against the Taliban in Pakistan in order to secure the rights of education for women across the region. These people were able to change the tides and bring everlasting change, and so can us all. Few of us here today will have the greatness to bend history itself, but all of us can work in our own power of thought and action and to build our own ripple and soon can ensure a giant wave and to ride into any change that we want. To the next administration, I'm proud to say that we have built that wave. You will always have our ongoing support in the direction of change that you're hoping to accomplish during your, during your term. That concludes the final USC report. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher, we again thank you for your everlasting support and for inspiring us to become greater leaders every day. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you thanked us, but I want to thank you for your leadership and for your team because had you not been the leader that you are, your team would not have been so strong and so successful. They would not have supported you the way they did. So thank you so much for what you've done.
And I certainly, I'm sorry. So our trustee, Laredo, is asking where you'd like to go to college. So. Yes, you will. So thank you, Igor, for your report, your service, for your wisdom and for your leadership. Thank you so very, very much. And so absolutely, thank you. And so at this time, we will hear from Dr. Dejane Grigsby, our Faculty Senate President. Dr. Grigsby.
Good afternoon. And one of the phrases he used was few will have the power or the ability to bend history. And you may be that person, Igor, you may have that. We thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Chancellor, Trustees, esteemed faculty and staff, and all community guests, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Mother's Day. We honor all the women who serve in such a capacity of nurturing and love, biological or otherwise. Further, we recognize our professional caretakers on International Nurses Day. Interestingly, this year, both Days of Honor fell on the same date, May twelfth. And applause to everyone for a successful term. As a faculty member, I come to you fresh off a spring semester, redolent with as much promise as a cherry tree in season. Both faculty and students have recently decided into what pursuits they plan to dedicate their summers in order to plant seeds for fall reimagination. Faculty submitted grades just yesterday, leaving indelible imprints on student portfolios of achievement and closing out the semester with sighs of satisfaction. Currently, in fact, various of our faculty senators, both full-time and adjunct faculty, are engaged in our annual faculty retreat in Galveston at the Tremont House. It's a four-day, off-campus professional development retreat where faculty from different disciplines engage in whole group and small group discussions, team-building activities, and other meaningful sessions, hopefully interspersed with some well-earned relaxation, all intended to provide space for deep reflection on teaching practices and the year's successes, and culminating in a deeper sense of H. C. C. Community. We are truly in the midst of celebrating our completers, too, our student graduates. With the various ceremonies of significance already realized, our Text Chaste High School equivalency seekers last Tuesday, our dual program, our dual credit program finishers just this morning, and our award-winning VAST program achievers last Friday, we honor the fortitude of our student populations. And I mean exactly that, our student populations, with the personal identities and preparedness that they each uniquely bring to the table. We will again meet in what should be a full day of pride and esteem, excuse me, this Friday for the two regular commencement ceremonies, and what riches we have to celebrate. More than one thousand students at each ceremony and the hundreds of faculty that will help lead them in for their accolades couldn't be more proud. And spring soon moves to summer. And what of the initiatives that transcend season, like the work of H. C. C.'s innovative fellows? For instance, what happens when a biology faculty reaches across and through to H. C. C.'s interior design, culinary arts, and business programs, as well as all college departments, student organizations, career services, and local vendors? And it's not a punchline. A realization of the innovative fellow project work of Dr. Terranica Blackman in establishing the Scholarly Cafe at the West Houston Institute, all work designed to achieve the goal of fostering a collaborative environment while catering to a wide variety of student needs. If you haven't yet visited and witnessed the build-out and grand piano, consider your next steps. It's worth it. And here, too, I'd like to recognize an outstanding student achievement and still the faculty win beneath his proverbial wings. One of our geology students, Rohan Kadka from Nepal, received the Chuck Cahy Geoscience Endowed Scholarship to Sam Houston State University, a two-year full tuition, room, board, fees specifically for a transfer student into a bachelor program for a geology degree. This is only the second award of this particular scholarship. I announce this because the faculty person, Professor Karen Yip, worked diligently with this student, including the penning of an all-powerful faculty recommendation letter on the student behalf. The H. C. C. Geology faculty en masse are looking forward to more students starting their geoscience academics at H. C. C. And transferring out to universities, especially with scholarships like this one. These faculty, all H. C. C. Faculty, are passionate and committed to helping students rise and be recognized. So Chancellor, with your indulgence, I'd like to recognize faculty. All faculty present here today, please do now rise and be recognized. Thank you. Further, with more faculty, staff, and students returning to our campuses under our enrollment benchmarks and goals, and with the institution's increased facility signage and investments, we are heartened by the increased conversations for a reimagined safety and security plan across the system. I also proffer today a heartfelt thanks to the compensation study team for meeting with various stakeholders and especially to include the Faculty Senate. An appreciable example of collaboration where the faculty priorities were heard and worked into the various proposed scenarios for investing in our collaborative future successes. We are excited to be part of the proposals for increases to both our full-time and adjunct faculty. I thank you in advance for your consideration. And so again, as I've declared before, here to reap what we have sown. Student completions, student success, increased collaborations across the system, and at the same time, a commitment to faculty enrichment and support. And Chancellor, congratulations on your well-deserved recognitions from our local dignitaries today. Ever onward, ever upward, and see you on Friday. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you so much, Dr. Grigsby, for your excellent faculty leadership, and thank you to our faculty for the work that all of you do. Thank you so very, very much. And now I would like to invite Mr. Aaron Henry, Staff Senate President, to the podium to present the Staff Report. Mr. Henry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The flowers, I'm stealing this from Mr. Lucic, the flowers are blooming again here at H. C. C. We're at the end of our Spring twenty-four semester. I would like to begin my wishing all of our mothers a happy belated Mother's Day. Hope everyone had a safe Mother's Day. Mothers are the epitome of love, and so thank you to all of our mothers. I also would like to offer my condolences to some of our H. C. C. Staff members in the loss of their children, and the persons of Ms. Tammy Anderson from the Southwest College, as well as Mrs. Cassandra Jackson here at thirty-one hundred Main. I would also like to take this time to publicly acknowledge the life of a great man whom I've had the pleasure of knowing for many, many years, a great role model and a joy major for justice in the person of Dr. Bill Lawson, founding pastor of Willa Avenue Baptist Church. I would also like to take the time to share with the board and acknowledge the role and work of the Staff Senate Graduation Committee, which is led by Ms. Priscilla Renew. The staff were actively a part and engaged in all of the Grad Fest activities that took place throughout the colleges, assisting and creating memorable celebrations for our students. The Staff Senate has supported both the Text Chaste and VAST ceremonies and are preparing for our May seventeenth ceremony to be held at the NRG Arena. I would also like to report that the Staff Senate is preparing for an all-staff conference to be held in the month of June with the theme of unstoppable resilience, the keys to staying strong during any challenge. We are working to position staff to succeed in supporting our students here at the college. This conference will provide a professional development opportunities for staff members. The goal is to provide professional development through various tracks to include student success, campus culture, customer service, leadership development, and other targeted professional development opportunities with the, with the goal of our staff members returning to our various colleges and offices with, to be on with information to be able to support our students as our enrollment increases. Additionally, our goal is to create a culture of continuous improvement and innovation here at Houston Community College. The Staff Senate Compensation Committee, along with the full staff body, are excited and grateful to see in the consideration for the budget increase for staff at the equitable amount with our faculty. Staff are grateful to Dr. Ford Fisher, to talent engagement, finance, and most of all, to our Board of Trustees for this consideration. Staff members are working extremely hard, and with the rise of goods and services and the cost of living, this will support our staff greatly. Staff are also looking forward to working with our campus police regarding safe campuses for all of our students and staff and faculty at our college system. Campus safety has risen as a very important issue currently with the rise of events, and we would like to begin a more collaborative and meaningful dialogue regarding safe campuses. We support and appreciate our campus police, but we realize the safety of our campuses involves more than just our campus police with patrolling. The Staff Senate has established a staff emergency fund with the intent to assist staff members who may have fallen on hard times financially. We will begin working with the foundation and talent engagement to make this a reality. The goal is to begin a campaign in the month of June. We will share more information with you as it comes about. The Staff Senate has also established a Student Success Committee who will work with the efforts of student success, retention, and completion efforts. Staff are actively seeking participation to be a part of H. C. C. Moving to her rightful position as the nation's top college. We seek to support all students across all of our communities. Last but not least, there, the Staff Senate issues an invitation as an open-door policy to all of our board members to our meetings whenever you would like to attend. We can work out the details with Board Services regarding your requests. And I'll close by saying, as we navigate the currents of change and progress, let us remember that the strength of our institution lies in the unity of purpose and the commitment of every member to our shared vision. Together, we chart a course toward excellence and inclusivity, guided by the principles of integrity and service. In the end, it is the dedication, passion, and collaboration of each individual that propels Houston Community College forward. Let us continue to inspire and empower one another as we shape the future of our beloved Houston community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, for your excellent lead- Thank you, Mr. Henry, for your excellent leadership as well and for your strong voice and advocacy for all staff. Thank you very much. And so now, as we wind down, Madam Chair, I would like to invite Dr. Norma Perez, the interim Senior Vice Chancellor for Instruction and Student Services, to the podium to highlight a student success story that focuses on credentials of value. Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, Trustees. This is a reminder of why we are here at Houston Community College. I'd like to recognize our student this year or this month, and that's Madison Chris. To be able to do something that you are passionate about and make that your career is most people's dream, but not everyone accomplishes that, except in this case. Madison Chris is a Houston Community College alumnus who has a passion for studio art and now has made that her career. She is living proof that your dreams can come true. She credits HCC and our art program for helping her achieve her lifelong goal. She received her Associate of Arts in Studio Arts in 2017. She graduated from the University of Houston in 2022 with a BA in Art History and a minor in Fine Arts. Madison has spent the last eight years serving various aspects of Houston's art industry. She now works for Houston Community College Visual Arts Department as a senior lab assistant. She hopes one day to get her Masters in Fine Arts and teach at the collegiate level. Here is her story.
I've always liked art since I was a little kid, so I did it all through high school and then into college. My parents supported me, so I was able to really pursue something I was passionate about. HCC was a really easy choice for me. It was local, it was super affordable, so it just seemed like the best option for me. My education at HCC was really fantastic, specifically the art department. I feel like I was very encouraged and really nurtured in my discipline. I actually ended up pursuing art history because of a class I took here. So after I graduated from HCC, I went along to U of H and got my Bachelor's in Art History. After I graduated from U of H, I actually heard back from a former mentor of mine from here saying there was a position open. It was full-time, so I went ahead and applied, and I've been here for two years. My position here at HCC is kind of like a catch-all for the studios for art, so I make sure that all of the supplies are in the studios, make sure everything's working, make sure if something's broken, it gets fixed. Really just anything logistical that needs to happen in our studios, I handle it. Working in the fields that I've been passionate about, you know, my whole life, it is really rewarding, especially because I'm helping students who are in the same position as me, so it's really wonderful to get to help them from the position that I'm at now, where I've gone on, I've gotten my Bachelor's, and now I can come back and help all of them get to where I am. So long-term, I would really like to get my Master's. I would love to teach at HCC in the art department or at another school. Yeah, that's my main goal. I'm living proof that there is careers in art. I came right back around and I'm working for an art department. I work with a ton of people who have art degrees. There's really a lot of opportunities out there as long as you work really hard, you push yourself, and just put yourself out there. I've always been someone who has enjoyed art and getting to HCC, I really got to pursue something I was passionate about. They helped me get to U of H, and I kept going until I came right back around to somewhere where I love everyone I work with, I love what I'm doing, and I'm around art all the time.
Madison, would you please stand? Congratulations again. Thank you so very, very much, Dr. Perez, for your excellent leadership, and to all of the presenters again, thank you. And to our dedicated board, thank you so very, very much for giving us this opportunity. Madam Chair, this now concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? And to be set aside for discussion? Okay. If there are no items to be pulled, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. We are now ready to vote on the consent agenda.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of eight to zero.
There are motion to approve item A, Financial Advisory Services Project Number RFQ 24-07.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract with Estrada, Ineos, and Company Incorporated to provide financial advisory services in support of the Finance Department and in accordance with RFQ 24-07. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Atkins, interim Vice Chancellor for Finance, to present this item. Mr. Atkins.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, members of the board. We request permission to enter into a contract with Estrada, Ineos, and Company for Financial Advisory Services. Please keep in mind that when we say Financial Advisory Services, we're talking about advisory services related to the management of our debt only. They help us in the event that we issue debt, in the event that we need to seek financing like we did for the Katy Construction Building, and then they help us on an annual basis with our bond disclosures and other reporting requirements. That is the extent of the advisory services that this company will provide to HCC. This was done on an RFQ, so you can see that the scores relate to the total quality of each of the performers, but I would note that we expect to see fairly significant cost savings on an annual basis under this new contract, in addition to an increase in performance as well.
Any questions? Trustee Wilson.
On the fee arrangement, is there a provision for a percentage, commission percentage for the products he sells, or is it just a straight fee arrangement?
So we pay a flat fee for the advisory services that they provide. In the event that the college issue is new bonds, that their fee would be based on a percentage of the amount of bonds issued, which is a standard operating practice for all financial advisory services.
Yeah, I understand it's a standard, but to me, it's a conflict of interest where you give advice and then you get money for the advice you give in the way of a commission on a product. I've raised this before, and I would prefer a straight fee arrangement for a financial advisor for this institution.
Any other questions?
Yeah, for me, Mr. Atkins, just to be, put a finer point on it, this is advisory services relative to our debt, not related to any financial investments we might make or anything other than in the exceptional case where we decide to issue additional debt or issue bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We'll now vote on item A, Financial Advisory Services Project Number RFQ 24-07.
Six in favor and two opposing.
Is there a motion to approve item B, Depository Bank Services Project Number RFP 24-12?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item recommends authorizing the Chancellor to execute a contract with JP Morgan Chase to provide the college with banking depository services in support of the Finance Department and in accordance with RFQ 24-12. With your permission, Madam Chair, I again invite Mr. Atkins to present the item.
Thank you. This contract was solicited using an RFP, so we included price as well as qualifications in the bid. I would note that with this particular solicitation, there's no expectation for small business development participation as the nature of the services we require for banking services could not be provided by any company other than some of the largest national banks. We have completed this competition and wish to enter into agreement with Chase Bank. The total cost for the seven-year engagement is estimated to be $298,000.
Any questions, trustees? No questions? Okay, thank you. If there are no questions, we will now vote.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of eight to zero.
There are motion to approve item C, Parking Lot and Parking Garage Cleaning Services Project Number RFP 24-36.
So moved.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item recommends, again, authorizing the Chancellor to execute a contract with Extreme Clean Pressure Washing to provide parking lot and parking garage cleaning services in accordance with RFP 24-36. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Atkins to present the item.
Thank you. We competed this service using an RFP. The term is for two years plus three additional one-year terms if desired by the college. I would note that the vendor, Extreme Clean Pressure Washing, met our SBD goal and received points for that in this particular award. With that, I would respond to any questions?
Any questions, trustees? Trustee Wilson.
On the three-year, I mean, the third-year bump, is there an increase in the cost for inflation, or is it five years at $176,44?
It's five years at $176,444 for a total of $882,000.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Atkins. We will now vote on the item.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of eight to zero.
There are motion to approve item D, Financial Budgeting, Planning, and Management Software Solutions and Implementation Cooperative Agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract with Curisoft Technology Corporation for the purchase and installation of a new financial budgeting, planning, and management software system through the Texas Department of Information Resources Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. With your approval, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Atkins to present this item as well.
Thank you. In seeking a new software system to help us manage our annual budgeting process, we have piggybacked on a competition that was conducted by Alamo College, which is why this is being purchased on a cooperative agreement and why you don't have any other information related to competition or scoring regarding the arrangement. The total cost for the five-year contract is $1.487 million. That includes the annual subscription of the Anaplan software at $490,000 plus $567,000 for implementation over the first several periods of use of the program. We are very excited about this program. We spend a great deal of time managing our budgeting process. This will help to automate many of the features and processes that we currently use and help us to provide various scenarios and options much more quickly and time effectively than we've done in the past. This should help us to be more efficient in the use of our resources internally on a department level and then obviously explicitly with helping the board to develop and manage the budget on an annual basis.
Any questions, trustees? Trustee Chief.
So first, I want to thank you, Dr. Ford Fisher, for responding to my questions. I was grasping in the dark a little bit that, you know, this significant spending line item has come up without any kind of, you know, supporting information, and thanks for working with me as I kind of felt through some of that. A lot of the responses to that supporting information came in about 10 minutes before we dove into our first special meeting earlier today. I certainly haven't had a chance to review it. None of the other board members have received that information yet. And given that we're asking for, you know, authority for a $1.5 million expenditure, I personally would appreciate if we did have some time to reflect on that content before we voted on this. And counsel, if you could please advise me if this is the right thing to do, but I would move that we postpone this by a month so that we all have time to review that information to make sure that we're making an informed decision on this. I assume that postponing wouldn't impact our current budget discussions since it's going to take us a while to implement the software anyway, so.
That's true. It will not impact our current budget discussions.
I have a question. I was, what was the explanation?
I was, what was the explanation again as to why there was no background?
So typically, when you're looking at the payroll summary or the supporting documentation, that's memorializing essentially the competition process that went into the decision to select this particular product. In this case, because we're using a cooperative agreement, there was no competition conducted by HCC, which is why that documentation was not provided.
Oh. Trustee Ryker.
Were you finished?
I'm finished, I'm finished.
I, oh, this isn't a reflection on how I feel about this. I just always ask, are there any negative implications to tabling it? Like, we're not being told, oh, this special low price for 10 days or anything like that? There's nothing, I just want to make sure that there aren't any negatives to tabling it.
So, we have been working with Curisoft and Truett for a number of months on this, and they've been graciously patient in extending this pricing to us. I don't believe that that will be an issue if we table this until the next board meeting. I will say that implementation on these types of software purchases take a while. If we delay this too long, and that puts us kind of right on the edge, it may impact whether or not we'll be fully implemented for next year's budgeting cycle.
And so my only comment would be if the board wants to postpone this item, since we've already opened up discussion, we would need a motion to postpone a second and then a vote on that. And if I understand correctly, the motion would be to postpone to the next regular board meeting. We would need to be clear in that motion.
So then I'd move to postpone.
Before the motion, I have a clarifying question. Does it have to be to the regular board meeting, or could it be the next full meeting of the entire board?
It could be, it could be the next full meeting of the entire board. It would have to be a special meeting or a regular meeting because it doesn't fall under any committee jurisdiction, so it could be until the next meeting of the full board, which if we had a special meeting in between now and the regular board meeting, we could do that.
Or you could, in theory, call a special board meeting during the next meeting of the whole meeting.
Correct.
And I'm saying that just in reference to the timing issue that Mr. Atkins mentioned.
And I think that would get us, Sharon, if I'm correct, to June 5th?
Yes, and we do have a special meeting scheduled for June 5th.
So it could be added to the agenda for the June 5th special meeting.
So then, motion to postpone consideration of item D until the next special or regular meeting of the board.
Do I need a second to that first? I've got a question.
No, no, there's already been a second, so if you have a question about the motion, that would be appropriate.
Who, what are we using now for our budgeting?
So we use Wocovia and a lot of Excel spreadsheets.
So this is, this is the first time the college has purchased such a, you know, I call it a massive system, at 1.4 software for the budgeting?
That's correct. We expect basically a light-speed jump into the next century.
Yeah, I realize it's five years, okay. You know, from my personal, I have a, you know, I have to leave it up to the smart people that are running this place because it's very difficult for me to assess the value of it. How, you know, does it, is it produce that much in the way of results for the cost of 1.4? That's what I always have to try to figure out, and that's difficult for me because I don't have enough knowledge, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. So now we vote on the motion?
We're voting on the motion to postpone.
So the motion that we're voting on is the motion to postpone consideration of item D until a special meeting or regular meeting of the board.
On June 5th?
Until the next regular, special meeting or regular meeting of the full board.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item E, Mary Ethel Schester?
Checkter.
Fund Agreement with Naming Facility Recognition. Is there a second? It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to approve naming of the Coleman College for Health Sciences Simulation Lab. And so with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Norma Perez and Ms. Karen Schmidt to present the item.
This is an item for a donation, a donation to the Coleman College for Health Sciences for the Health Science Simulation Lab. It's the naming of that, of that section of the facility. It's a donation of $100,000 endowment fund that will be used to recognize the lab. This is the inside of the simulation lab, for those of you who have been to, I believe it's on the 10th floor of the new facility. Here are some of the photos showing you some of the equipment that is in the lab that is used, of course, to train our students, and particularly our nursing students, but it is used by all of the allied health programs. And there are the entrances, and there's a location of where they'd want to put the photo and the bio of the name site. And there's the donation and the value of how it's being designated. And then this, of course, is the, one of the donors. And the rest is covering the cost of what is, what all of the donation will cover. And for those of you who remembered, we had, Richard Checkter was a board of trustee. Karen, did you want to add anything?
Thank you very much. Richard Checkter was a board of trustee member, and this is being done in honor of his mother. So the bio that you see is in honor of his mother, and he has established the endowment to be able to honor his mother.
Comments, trustees? Trustee Vandals?
I think it's amazing, and it's an amazing tribute to former trustee Checkter's mother. This is really great, and we hope to thank him if he will come to the board meeting, but I really appreciate that he could honor his mother in this way.
I agree with that. I strongly agree. So thank you, ladies. Thank you so much.
Back to, I was on the board with, at the same time with Richard Checkter, so I think this is a great opportunity of honoring a family member, you know, and we, this is something that we've been asking for, is for start naming the buildings, and anybody that wants to name, just put the money down. So it's a great honor. Thank you.
That's it? Any, no more questions, comments? Thank you, ladies. Is there a motion to approve item, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of eight to zero.
That was a scandal, was that one, Miss Brown? That's not G, that was a part of that one.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve item F, Personnel Agenda for Faculty? Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item recommends approval of the faculty personnel presented in May 2024. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Izzy Anderson, Vice Chancellor of Talent Engagement, to present the item. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. We bring for your approval a single contract. This is very much needed replacement of a librarian over at the Northeast College.
Are there any questions or comments?
No question but a comment. I'm so glad to see that we do need a librarian at HCC, that we're keeping our librarians.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item G, Approved Letter of Support Regarding Call for Presentations for 2024 ACCT Annual Conference?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item presents a recommendation to approve a letter of support for proposal submission to present at the 2024 ACCT Annual Leadership Congress that is scheduled for October 23rd through 26, 2024 in Seattle, Washington. This item requires a letter of support from the institution for submission. The proposal submission is due, as I mentioned before, on May the 24th, and requires the following, and includes at least one trustee among presenters, demonstrate relevance of the session topic to the 2024 Congress theme and tracks. All presenters must be registered for the Congress. Sessions must be approximately 60 minutes in length. Proposal must include a letter of support from the college. So with that submission, Madam Chair, I defer to trustee Vandals.
Thank you, Chancellor. The reason why we are requesting this is because our internal audit team was asked by the Audit Committee to establish a system for the enterprise risk management. We understood that our prior enterprise risk management system did not address the critical needs that the board needed to see and understand in order to make sound fiduciary decisions. So the Audit Committee gave this team the charge to establish a robust enterprise risk management system that would allow us to identify the top 10 risks, maintain a reporting system about those risks, maintain and establish a statistical analysis of those risks, and to tell this board what the fiscal impact of those risks would be. They returned an extraordinary system, and I will confidently say there's nothing else like it at any other community college. I will also say that these, this information was given to a roundtable discussion at Association of Governing Boards, and five of those university institutions requested that report that was given to this board because they had nothing like this. So it is imperative that we present this because we understand the impact of poor enterprise risk management. We have resolved that issue. We have made that issue a very powerful implementation tool for us to successfully accomplish our fiduciary responsibilities, and it needs to be presented nationwide to the 1,200 community colleges at the national conference.
Any questions about that? I, I think that's an excellent idea for a presentation, I really do, and I'm glad you, you know, suggested that we do that presentation because I think it's going to be beneficial to many community colleges.
Just a quick question. What's the title of the presentation?
Okay, the title of the presentation is Looking Into the Future: Implementing Enterprise Risk Management as a Proactive Strategy to Understand and Mitigate Risk.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
We will move to item H, Southeast, Southeast College Listening Session. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is a report item only that provides feedback obtained from the four town hall meetings conducted by the Southeast College in January and February 2024. With your permission, Madam Chair, President Villagrande Glover will present the item. Dr. Villagrande Glover.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustee chancellor. I wish this was an action item. I came eight zero all night long, so, but that's okay. This is an information item only. At Houston Community College, we are committed to ensuring that our decisions and initiatives align with the needs and aspirations of the communities we serve. Recognizing the role of community stakeholders, we place great importance on engaging with them and gathering their feedback. To that end, earlier this year, Southeast College hosted four listening sessions at the Eastside campus. These events were designed to achieve two primary objectives. One, to share information regarding HCC's utilization of the land adjacent to the HCC Eastside campus. And two, to gather feedback and insights from participants on STEM workforce programs and initiatives that would have the greatest impact on the community. By sharing this information, we aim to foster transparency and actively engage stakeholders in addressing the specific workforce and educational needs of the community. So there are four components to the listening sessions, as you can see from the slide. One, we covered HCC Southeast Service Region and Demographic Data. So an overview of HCC Southeast Service Region and Demographic were presented. This information provided attendees with understanding the community being served by Southeast, including key demographic statistics such as population and educational attainment. We then went over labor market overview. Another crucial component of the town hall meetings was a labor market overview provided by the Greater Houston Partnership. Key information included interesting sectors with high job growth, in-demand occupations, and emerging trends in the local labor market. By examining the labor market overview, our attendees were able to identify the skills and training needs of the community, helping guide development of relevant workforce programs and initiatives. The third, we went over our STEM programs and our points of pride. We also use this opportunity to show We also use this opportunity to showcase our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics programs, and highlighted the points of pride within these programs. Participants saw an overview of the various programs offered at Southeast and unique features that set these programs apart. These components aim to demonstrate our college commitment to providing high-quality STEM education and training opportunities within the community. One significant data point that I'd like to share with you that was presented by our Greater Houston Partnership was the skills required for Houston's economy. And Houston's economy and industries are being reshaped by technology and other global forces at a more rapid pace than ever before, including talent needs. As technology affects all our jobs, creating new ones, augmenting others, and automating some, digital skills will increasingly be requirement for all occupations. In addition, employers are placing a premium on interpersonal skills. So if you look at the slide in front of you, by 2031, which is really around the corner, 30% of our middle skill occupations require some college or associate degree, hence our focus on workforce programs. In an effort to reach a diverse group of stakeholders, we held two morning sessions and two evening sessions for a total of approximately 200 community members participating in the totality of the sessions. So following the presentations, attendees were provided comment cards in the survey. Two specific questions were asked. What workforce programs or STEM initiatives do you believe would benefit our community? And you'll see that list there in front of you. AI, of course, stems across all disciplines. Energy, aerospace, and space research, with the Chancellor had just mentioned earlier in her remarks. Logistics, especially given the locality of the port of Houston. Advanced manufacturing, skilled trades programs. And there is also an interest with our participants with the Fine Arts Program. The second question we asked was, do you have suggestions for improving accessibility of these programs within our our community? And I'd be happy to report that some of the things that they recommended, the feedback, we are already doing in large scale. Opportunities for networking, partnering with local high schools, ISDs, collaborating with our CBOs, communities, providing space where existing unused equipment can be utilized, placement of science programs in the library within the buildings, and co-locating the Workforce Solutions Office, which is across the street from 45. So our next steps, like I said, were well underway, and was really pleased to see that some of the things, again, recommended, we are already doing. So we're developing a really intensive intentional plan on our initiatives to address the priorities identified, like the robotics program that we have in the summer for our students, our middle school and high school students, securing funding with grant opportunities, corporate foundation support, fundraising. Again, strengthening partners with our local community members and ISDs, and most importantly, providing progress updates and transparencies, outgoing feedback for our community. And that's my presentation. Thank you very much. Questions, feedback? Thank you.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that item was for was a report item, so no action is needed?
Yeah, it was just a report item.
So next, we'll move to item I, Report on Capital Improvement Program. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item provides an update on HCC's capital improvement plan. With your permission, Mr. Vice Chair, I invite interim Vice Chancellor Warren Hurd and Chief Finances Facilities Officer Samantha Benjiras to provide the report. Ms. Benjiras.
Good evening, Chancellor, trustees. Tonight's Capital Improvement Project report will be brief as updates from our prior month are minimal. The team has pivoted to focus on other institutional priorities such as safety and security and deferred maintenance. A few highlights that I would like to draw your attention to include the pylon sign at Automotive Tech continues to have Center Point and City of Houston coordination needs that we are closely tracking to get that online. The pylon sign reader board at the Eastside Facility has a faulty component that's being replaced under the warranty, which should be resolved soon. We've opted to move the Missouri City Monument Sign to a later phase to better align with the other monument signs, since it will no longer be a pylon sign. Building top signage, we anticipate fabrication starting in the next couple of weeks, and that will continue through the summer and then move into installation. The 2013 CIP 2.0 projects are primarily focused on Katy right now with the irrigation project complete, and the greenhouse shop drawings are underway and expected to be received by the end of this month. There will be follow-up on the Woodridge Retail Center discussion in June to confirm next steps. Food service white box spaces are nearing completion across the system, and a food service vendor has been identified and engaged to collaborate on the use for each of those. In the interim, a temporary wall will be placed across each of those spaces while onboarding of a vendor is completed. The HERF MSI Grant Board provided an option that which an extension was offered, and HCC requested the approval to exercise that option so that the full HBC scope that we originally intended may be achieved because there were some lead time issues that were identified over the duration of the project. Finally, safety and security, the door hardware bids are back due back on a rolling schedule between May 22 and June 19. We will reconvene after that with the board with our recommendation. This concludes the Capital Improvement Project report for May, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Trustees, any questions?
I do. We're looking at the pylon monument signs. There are only three signs that were done in Phase Two. How many pylon monument signs were completed in Phase One?
Four.
So a total of seven, and how many were we supposed to do?
There was one additional that was going to be in Missouri City. The City of Missouri City approved only a monument sign to meet their signage height restriction requirements.
So the total number of pylon signs we were supposed to do?
Would be eight.
I'm looking at Phase Three. So I'm asking about the total number of signs.
Oh, so Phase Three includes the monument signs as well. So there are different sizes with the 20-foot, the 40-foot, and the and the monument size.
So we have not done 10 monument signs?
That's correct.
And the low bidder has delays with fabrication and construction?
So on Phase One and Two, that's correct, there were delays. On Phase Three, we are on hold pending a decision about the naming of the institution.
The naming of the institution. May I address that, please?
Yes.
Yes, that was put on hold temporarily, primarily because we want to bring to the board the baccalaureate degree programs that we will have in artificial intelligence as well as in healthcare. And with those baccalaureate degrees, once the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools approves the authorization of offering the baccalaureate degrees at their board meeting in June, then there will be a question about whether or not we can market these baccalaureate degrees coming from a community college. That will be for the board to discuss and decide. Then there will be a discussion about whether or not we would be able to not only enroll the students but complete the students, and whether or not employers would hire the students who are getting baccalaureate degrees from a community college. And so that's the discussion that will be brought to the board, and we decided that instead of expending money now on pylon signs and monument signs that could conceivably have a change of name depending upon the direction from the board, that we should probably put that on hold temporarily until the board decides.
Okay, okay. So let me let me go to the page five with the culinary shell build out. How long have we been building out this culinary shell?
Well, there was a pause within the project, so it's been about a year now between permitting and build out.
But didn't we have discussion about this prior to a year ago? And how long?
They rejected one of the proposals for it, right? It came up for vote. We had the people are ready to go, and we rejected it as a board.
Okay, so more like two years. So we'll finish this. When is when are we expected to finish that?
So by the end of the year.
Quarter two, so.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong line. Yes, quarter two. So we are in the final phase of punch list, and there are a couple of electrical items pending.
Okay, and what is our challenge with the the food service white boxes?
We had a plumbing concern due to the drainage incline that was available within the existing facility. And then we had a back order on the selected tile. So we re-selected a new tile and are working on that installation.
And so Central South and Stafford. So the plumbing is resolved at Stafford?
Yes.
I have not seen construction progressing at Central South, and I visit on a regular basis.
So the flooring issue is the remaining issue there. And this will a reminder, this won't look like a complete build out because once the operator comes in, they will then have the opportunity to make it fit for purpose as a partner.
Okay, so can you send to the board what the completed version of this looks like from Northeast and Eastside versus what the incomplete project looks like South and Stafford? So we have a clear understanding of what's done and what's not?
Yes, absolutely.
That's it. Thank you. I'm done.
Trustees, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Wilson?
On page 23, FC 52-23, it's a daily phase. It's facilities condition assessment, urgent main switch gear doesn't work to emergency power for the air handler and chiller. Is is that the signal from the PLC not reaching the automatic transfer switch?
Correct. So it is operational. It's the.
You have to do it manually, though?
Right.
Okay, until the.
Until we get that repaired.
So and what are you replacing, the PLC and the transfer switch or?
That is the requested proposal.
For just for just the PLC and the transfer switch?
Yes.
And there's two of them to Bovet Engineering for a little over a million dollars.
Yes, so we're on a rotating pool with MEP engineers, and we work closely with procurement and legal to make sure that we are rotating on a regular basis to give equal opportunity. Now, that's over a number of years.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that.
So we have a a pool of vendors that we can pull from for any of the professional services.
Came up in Bovet's who you're using?
Yes, that's correct.
I got I got no problem with how you select them. My question is, it's over a million dollars for a PLC and a transfer switch. That just caught my eye.
Well, and these are are still within procurement, so they will come for board approval when we get to the point of having finalized numbers.
You're not changing out the generator?
That's not in the proposal at this time.
Okay, and and there's no major switch gear that's being changed out? It's just a PLC of the transfer.
Not to my knowledge, but I would like to verify and report back to you if that's okay.
Yes, it just caught my eye. Seemed like a lot of money. Thanks.
And to accentuate Trustee Wilson's point, I think, you know, be it as a may that it comes before the board for final approval, the way our system works here is take it or leave it, right? When administration advances a recommendation, so to the point that Trustee Wilson is making, it's essential that, to the extent feasible, we are on the front end of it in trying to not bring things to the board and put the board in a position where it's forced to have to make a tough take it or leave it decision relative to timing and everything else that we have to take into account. The other question I would ask, I don't know if the question is for you, Mr. Hurd, or Mr. Atkins. Given the timeline that Ms. Men Harris was expressing, from a budgetary standpoint, are these things allocated for FY 2024? What happens when there's a delay that postpones it into Q4 2024, for example?
So the funds for these projects are carried in the in a separate fund from our general fund, so the passage of time from one fiscal year to the next doesn't impact how these funds are expended or how they're allocated. And so we're not we're not faced with the same issues that we have as as we look at unspent funds in our operating budget.
Thank you for that answer. Any other questions? All right, this meeting is hereby adjourned at?
I wanted to say something before we.
Oh, okay. Well, it's not adjourned because Ms. Sharon didn't reply quickly enough, so Trustee Laredo.
Well, it just I know this is our last meeting for May before the school year's over, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all the faculty, staff, and everyone that made a difference in our students this year. So just a great big thank you, and I know that those that are going to be there on Friday will you'll get your pay on that day because that's when you see all those students walking across the stage and getting those certificates and degrees. So again, thanks to everyone. Thanks to my fellow trustees here also for participating in the graduations. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments? Go in once. All right, this meeting is hereby adjourned at?
7:02 PM.
All right, have a good evening.